Good morning. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on May 20th at 8:12 a.m. You can leave your cellphones on, it doesn't matter. Our first action is Action Item A, Canvas Election Results for Trustee Election Held on May 10th, 2014. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you President Hogg. You have before you a set of materials relating to the results of the trustee election which was held Saturday, May 10th, 2014, to elect trustees to three-year terms for Places 6 and 7 on the Board of Trustees for the Arlington Independent School District. The set of materials you have before you contains the following: a summary sheet of the total ballots cast and the votes received for each candidate by polling location, an unofficial cumulative report of early votes and election day votes for each candidate from Tarrant County Election Administration, and an official precinct report by polling location from Tarrant County Election Administration. The results of the election are as follows: Place 6, Bowie Hogg, 9,637 votes, unopposed. Place 7, Bridgette Davis, 5,159 votes, Keisha Mays, 6,232 votes. If you accept this canvas of election to fill the three-year terms for Places 6 and 7 on the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, it would be appropriate to hear a motion in canvas at this time.
Do we have a motion?
President Hogg, I move to approve the election results for the trustee election held on May 10th, 2014, for Place 6 and 7.
Thank you Mr. Pampa. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. A motion by Mr. Pampa, a second by Dr. Reich. You need a discussion. Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, Ms. Peña is absent, six trustees voting in affirmative. Motion passes. Our second item is Consider and Take Action with Respect to Adopting an Order Canvassing the May 10th, 2014 Bond Election. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you President Hogg. You have materials with respect to adopting an order canvassing the May 10th, 2014 Bond Election which was held Saturday, May 10th, 2014. The materials you have before you contain the following: a summary sheet of total ballots cast for and against by polling location, an official cumulative report of early votes and election day votes for and against from Tarrant County Election Administration, and an official precinct report by polling location from Tarrant County Election Administration. The results of the election are as follow: for, 9,450 votes; against, 4,107 votes. If you accept this canvas of election to adopt the order canvassing the May 10th, 2014 Bond Election in the district to authorize the issuance of bonds in the aggregate principal amount of 663,130,000, it would be appropriate to hear a motion to adopt the canvas at this time.
Is there a motion?
President Hogg, I move to adopt an order canvassing the May 10th, 2014 Bond Election in the district and declaring the result thereof.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Ms. Sullins. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting in affirmative. Motion passes. It is 8:15 a.m. and this meeting is adjourned. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the AISD Board of Trustees on June 3rd at 5:32 p.m. Our first agenda item for the evening is swearing in our school board trustees from the 2014 election, and presiding over that is a former school board member, a former school board president, our current state representative, a former state Board of Education member, and a true champion for Arlington, our friend State Representative Diane Patrick.
Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this joyous occasion. This is just such an exciting time in the life of the Arlington ISD, and I appreciate the honor for your inviting me to join you for this joyous occasion. You know, when you think about school board service, people from the Arlington community like these seven individuals sitting here tonight have been serving and dedicating their lives to the children of our community for over a century. I think it's fitting to note though that this board in particular has been especially visionary and especially strong in being a champion for the children of Arlington. So I want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you. Now, we're here tonight to do the swearing in of two very, very special individuals. I know that most of us know them, but I'd like to just elaborate a bit on their biographies because I think that they are illustrative of the kind of individuals from our community that become members of our school board. President Bowie Hogg, I've known Bowie most of his life, and I can tell you that as a product of the Arlington schools that we're very proud that he's now president of the board. I know that we have to throw in the biography that he's a Texas A&amp;M graduate as well, and we're very proud of the fact that you have been elected in 2008, reelected in 2011, and reelected again in 2014. Thank you so much for your service, and when you think about that your heritage is a very, very long history in Texas public service. So again, we thank you for that. Now Keisha, where is she? She is over here. All right. Not here yet.
She's not officially sworn in yet Diane.
Not officially sworn in. But we do want to talk about the fact that she's lived in Arlington for over 13 years, and she and her husband have three boys who are very involved in the Arlington ISD and extracurricular activities. I think that your background as a CPA will make a very, very valuable contribution to this school board, but it's already made a valuable contribution to our community through the many committees that you've served on over the years. You've served on the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee, the Financial Futures Committee, the District Level Instructional Decision Making Committee, and on and on and on. Your background as being an auditor for the Comptroller's Office again will prove invaluable once again to this school board, and especially your dedication to the community. So again, I thank each and every one of you for the many hours that you give to our community. I will tell you, as was mentioned, I've had the privilege of serving this community in several different political capacities, but I can tell you that there is no more difficult job than being a school board member. Also very rewarding obviously, but again, a very difficult job in the sense of the long hours that you put in, and it's very local. It's very common. I'm sure you recognize the experience of seeing people at the grocery store who are your constituents who have just one quick question. And so again, thank you for your time over and over again. At this time, I'd like to start with the swearing in of Board President Bowie Hogg. If you would please come forward. If you will please repeat this oath of office. I, Bowie Hogg, do solemnly swear-
I, Bowie Hogg, do solemnly swear-
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of trustee-
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of trustee-
Place 6, Arlington Independent School District-
Place 6, Arlington Independent School District-
Of the state of Texas-
Of the state of Texas-
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
The Constitution and laws of the United States-
The Constitution and laws of the United States-
And of this state-
And of this state-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you Diane. Thank you so much.
All right, let's hear it for Mr. Sullins. Congratulations. Welcome back. At this time, I'd like to call forward Keisha Mays. If you will repeat after me. I, Keisha Mays-
I, Keisha Mays-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office-
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office-
Of trustee, Place 7-
Of trustee, Place 7-
Arlington Independent School District-
Arlington Independent School District-
Of the state of Texas-
Of the state of Texas-
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
The Constitution and laws of the United States-
The Constitution and the laws of the United States-
And of this state-
And of this state-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Now at this time, I'd like to ask each of you to make remarks to the audience. Thank you again for giving me this privilege.
Thank you Diane, and once again, let's give a hand to Diane Patrick, a true servant in Texas. Let me just take a few minutes because this is my now third time to be sworn in, and there's nothing more special than the first time you're sworn in. So I will not take much time even though I've been known to drag on with a microphone. So Diane, to the trustees and all that have come before us, thank you so much for setting the precedence of a very high-performing board and a high-performing district. There's nothing more important, and there's nothing more important that we fight for daily to ensure what trustees before us have brought before us. So I thank you for all your service. Let me just thank, before anything, I learned a rule by watching someone else forget, and there's a rule you never forget, especially when she's seven months pregnant. Let me thank my sweet wife, my wife Leslie Hogg. You know, I think my colleagues up here will say, there's nothing more rewarding than being a trustee. There really isn't. It is a lot of hard work, it's a lot of nights, it's really difficult. I used to say I had zero gray hair until I became a trustee, and now I just have a little. But there's truly one of the most rewarding jobs, but there's no one that sees it how hard it is sometimes, and it's the biggest support that helps us do this than our families. And so I have to take this moment to thank my wife for those nights when we come in at midnight on Thursday, and she's already asleep, she's ready to teach the next day, and she's like, "Keep it down. Don't wake me up from where the situation is." Or the nights every evening when a parent's calling, we have those discussions, or when I'm strategizing with another board member and having discussions, and dinner times interrupted by me going off and talking through. It's the family that suffers in those. So I think anyone will say, the family's the strongest support system that allows this, and I can't thank you enough for all your support. Thank you. And then I have to thank the folks who have helped guide me to this from the very start, my parents Porky and Sue Hogg, who are retired educators, one in Fort Worth ISD and one here in Arlington. Thank you for raising me with a servant's heart. I truly believe there's nothing more important in this world than giving back. We can all work, we can all make money, but there's nothing truly more important than ensuring we're giving back to something that gave so much to us, and that's why I feel the AISD has done for me in all my life. And I thank you for guiding me to look and say, there's nothing more important than faith, family, friends, service, and fellowship. So I thank you for all your support, my parents. And last, let me just say thank you to the community. There's nothing more important than thanking the community for electing me again. It's a distinct honor. There's seven of us that are bestowed upon this honor to serve this community, and there's nothing more gratifying than seeing the community support with votes and election and being able to serve another three years on this board. Hopefully, we're doing the right job. I always say, we may not always make the right decisions, but we're sure going to take every effort to work as hard as we can to make the decisions we think are the right direction for this district. So thank you to all your support, and thank you to the community, and look forward to another three years. And now let me introduce, and we won't haze or anything Keisha, we don't encourage that in the AISD, so we don't do it as trustees because we expect students to do it. I couldn't be more honored to introduce our newly-elected trustee for Place 7. She's going to be a valuable asset to this board. You heard Diane talk about her, but all the work she's done in the past for this district. As we say, she's one of the most prepared board members we'll ever have coming into this district, and we couldn't be more honored to serve with her. So let me introduce your Place 7 trustee, Ms. Keisha Mays.
Well, good evening everybody. First of all, I want to give thanks to God because he is the source of every bit of strength I pull out for every and any single thing that I do. I'd also like to thank my father, God rest his soul, for always telling me, "Keisha, you are a phenomenal woman, and don't let anyone ever tell you that you're not." I'd also like to thank my mother, who will be 84-years-old wise this year. Hi Mom, I know you're watching. I want to thank her for raising me to know that I am no better than anyone else, but no one else is better than me. I appreciate her for raising me to tell me what is right and to teach me what is wrong, and even at 84, she's about three inches shorter than I tell her she used to be, she will still stand in my face and say, "Keisha, I did not raise you that way." And for that, I appreciate it Mom. I'd also like to thank my wonderful husband, who is obviously making sure that my children were dressed and looked appropriate to be here because they're still on their way. So, we will get to watch this together on the internet streaming in the future. But I would love to thank my very supportive husband, who has always, always treated me like the queen of the castle, even in the kitchen. And I appreciate that. I also want to thank my three boys, Robbie II, Solomon, and Malcolm, three wonderful, wonderful young men that I'm very proud of, and I'm so excited that they're excited, and they still don't quite grasp the things that we really get to do. My youngest has already asked if we can keep the vending machines open all day at school, so we still need to have that talk and exactly what our roles will be as trustees. I'd also like to thank all of my friends. I can say Team Keisha, and it's so gratitude to look out in this audience and see Team Keisha. There's my family now. Hi boys. As I was saying, I really, really, from the bottom of my heart, would like to thank Team Keisha. I'm standing here, but I know I'm not standing here by myself, and I know that I would not be standing here if it was not for the support, if it wasn't for the prayers, if it wasn't for the time that was put in by so many people that I'm looking out in the audience. And for that, I want to say thank you. I look out and see people that I've worked with since my boys were in kindergarten, and I'm so grateful that you're still here, and I'm grateful to be here. But really, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank every single person that supported me, worked with me, and the community, because that is the only reason why I am standing here. Now with that being said, I'm also very excited, and I'm very excited to join this team of eight, who has already set forth a path that is so exciting, and it's already started, but I'm so glad that I get to still hop on that train while it's still moving and see what value I might be able to add. So once again, I'm very, very excited about joining what they call the team of eight. Very happy to be able to be a part of this team headed by Dr. Kavasos, who I think is an exceptional superintendent. Thank you. And I've already told him that I will take every second I can to absorb everything I can from him. That's one thing I do, is I'm a sponge. When I'm around things that I think is positive and successful, I like to take some of that and use it in the future for any time that I might need to do that. So also with Dr. Kavasos, supported by a great administrative staff that I'm very excited about getting an opportunity to work with on a different level, and already knowing most of them, that makes it really exciting because now we really get to see who we all really are, and that's going to be fun. And I'm sorry, I just have to say this, my pastor's in the back. Pastor, thank you for being here. Thank you for your prayers and your support. Very important, when we talk about family, family is not just your mother, your father, your husband, your children, but family's your friends, family is your support, whether it be religious, whether it be financial, that's your family. So I want to thank what I see out here as my family. And very honestly, the last thing I'd like to say is that I'm very, very, very humbled to be able to serve what I think is a great district of Arlington. Bowie gave me an opportunity to say thank you again to my wonderful supportive husband that treats me like a queen, my wonderful three boys that support and are learning how to treat their queen when I pick her out.
Ms. Mays, I talked about earlier, those nights when we're home late from these board meetings and they're upset because they haven't eaten anything, just use this right now, it's a good time. So, let me take a minute and just introduce a couple of special guests. Some of our former trustees are in the audience, and I think it's always important to recognize though, I see Mr. Jim Ash in the back. I see former city council member Steve McCollum. Former trustee Dan Diipert. Now former trustee, Mr. Tony Pampa. As we announce our current state representative, Diane Patrick. Who will be ending her year of service, and our Democrat nominee for District 94, Cole Ballwig. Did I miss anyone? Huh? Anyone else? Did I miss anyone? Making sure I didn't miss anyone. Looking around, looking around. If I missed you, I'm sorry. I don't know how I repassed you. So at this time, I would thank you for coming in to watch us be sworn in today. We do now have to get to work and do the actual part of what we were elected to do. This is a great opportunity Arlington, and we thank you for being here. So at this time, I would ask the board to join us in open session, and we will reconvene in here at around 7:00 p.m. for open session. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the open session of the Board of Trustees Meeting on June 3rd at 7:34 p.m. Apologize for being a little late, we thought we'd be 7:15, and it took us a little more. So apologize for that. We will start the evening with the opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Reich in the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank Dr. Reich. And we're going to jump, one real quick thing on the agenda, we are going to jump to our performance, because you see a lot of students standing here right in front of us, and one told me they're missing dinner because we're late. So, I'm kidding, they didn't really say that, I was joking with them, but they probably are. So at this time, I was told we have a great performance of a mash of Bach and the Beatles tonight. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the Hutchinson Junior High Orchestra. Now as they start packing up, let me brag, because I don't think everyone recognized the Brodenberg Concerto Number Five by Bach at the start, but I think everyone did recognize Obladi Oblada by the Beatles at the end. So very well done Hutchinson Junior High Orchestra. Let me talk, this orchestra consists of the Concert Orchestra, the Philharmonic Orchestra, and the Symphony Orchestra. All orchestras have competed in the UIL this spring and have received excellent and superior ratings for 2014. We're here in the Symphony Orchestra today, a group consisting mainly of eighth graders who will graduate from junior high this week and continue their studies at Sam Houston High School, which I know that Sam Houston High School orchestra instructor is waiting to get their hands on you guys to perform. And we have to thank our orchestra director for Hutchinson Junior High, Ms. Gloria Vila. Thank you Gloria. And I'm sorry, it's Glory, sorry. And I was also told she attended Hutchinson Junior High as a student, so like many of our teachers in the district, it's really cool when they're back teaching at the school they attended. Wonderful thing. Next, let's go to, one of the things that preceded this meeting was a swearing in of newly-elected trustee, Ms. Mays. Ms. Mays, welcome to the team. We're glad you're joining us. And I was reelected, so I have the honor of serving another term. Congratulations to Ms. Mays, and I guess myself on our reelections. It's very odd to congratulate yourself, that sounds really weird. So, I'll just leave it at Ms. Mays, congratulations. Now we must move to our next item on the agenda, Organization Board of Trustees, which is our election of board officers. It is our policy that each year at the meeting, we set new trustees' terms, selection of election of board officers be placed on the agenda, and this is the time, and the only time of the year, Dr. Kavasos, that the gavel is handed to our superintendent for the purpose of beginning our elections, and it's the only time this happens. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you Mr. Hogg. Do we have a motion and a second for President?
I move that we reelect Bowie Hogg as president of the board.
A second.
Motion by Peter Barron and second by Jamie Sullins. Are there any of the nominations? If not, please vote. All members voting in the affirmative, congratulations Bowie Hogg as president of the board.
Thank you Dr. Kavasos. Good job with the gavel, Dr. Kavasos, you did well with it. Looked natural. When you eventually retire superintendent, we'll elect you as board member. He's ready to meet. And thank you to my colleagues for the trust and the vote at this time. Now we have a motion, we have a motion and a second, so now, doing it as a slate, we will take a nomination for other officers. Ms. Peña?
Yes, I'd like to nominate the slate of officers, Vice President Jamie Sullins, Secretary Dr. Aaron Reich, and Assistant Secretary John Hibbs.
I have a motion by Ms. Peña, do I have a second?
I second.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second on the slate of officers. We have a motion and a second on the slate of officers as read by Ms. Peña. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, all trustees voting affirmative, we have our slate of officers. Thank you very much. Sorry, we have lots of paperwork tonight. At this time, we'll ask for all silence, all cell phones, electronic devices. If you would, please silence those. And if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Perfect, thank you. We'll now move to program presentation, item B, recognition of Jay Woodrow Count's scholarship recipients. Ms. Fielding?
Good evening, President Hogg, Dr. Kavassos, and board members. It's with great honor I present the recipients of the 2013-2014 Jay Woodrow Count scholarships. A committee at each high school selects one person to send forward to the selection committee. So, we have seven students who go to the Jay Woodrow Count Scholarship Committee and they choose the recipients. And it is based on seniors that have earned high academic awards and achievements. They've demonstrated strong leadership qualities and possess a unique combination of talents. But before presenting the board, let me tell you a little bit about Jay Woodrow Count. He was born in Bonham, Texas. He grew up there and graduated from Bonham High School. After high school, he went to what is University of North Texas on a basketball scholarship. Upon graduating from college, he went on to serve in the US Navy as a naval officer and he served on the USS Texas. In 1949, Mr. Count began his educational career with Arlington ISD where he spent 36 years. He retired in 1985 as superintendent and this building is named for him, the Jay Woodrow Count's Administration Building. Mr. Count took great pride in Arlington schools and the personnel and students who strive to make it outstanding. He died in October 2006 at the age of 90. His legacy will live on through the scholarship that he established and funded. I am going to recognize, we have two recipients and I'm going to ask them, when I call their name, to join me at the podium. Our first scholarship recipient is Colin Lee of Bowie High School. I'm going to ask Colin to share with us where he's going to school, what he's doing, and to introduce anyone you have with you this evening.
Good evening, I'm Colin Lee and I'm attending University of Texas at Arlington and I'll be majoring in biochemistry. Today I have with me Mr. Hogg, who's my counselor.
And our next recipient is Nguyen Tran of Seguin High School.
Good evening, my name is Nguyen Tran. I am here with my counselor, my uncle, and my beautiful cousin. I am going to attend the University of Texas at Arlington. I will be majoring in biochemistry and my dream is to become an anesthesiologist. Thank you very much.
Did I get it right? Y'all are both majoring in biochemistry?
Yeah.
Y'all should be study partners, so. Obviously, you've proven where it is and I think as a biochemistry major, you need many study partners. So, congratulations to you both. You are, you're the reason we do all this work to have a district and graduates like yourself. So, congratulations, thank you for that. And we look forward to seeing your future progress and we're glad you're, not sad you're leaving the ISD, but glad you're leaving with such a high expectation, so we're proud of you. So, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to C, Student Leadership Advisory Board. Ms. Smith or Ms. Johnston, Ms. Smith?
President Hogg, Dr. Kavassos, and members of the board, I'm thrilled to stand before you today with the third group of our Student Leadership Advisory Board. This group was formed as a, as a vision after a student focus group during the strategic plan. These students serve in a variety of capacities as leaders on their campuses, as the voices for students of AISD, and also as representatives of their school and as of our district. So, I want to take just a minute, I'm going to ask each of them to stand up. As I introduce them, I would like to introduce you to Arlington High School and these are the junior class presidents. Arlington High School is Grace Sprinkle and stand up and remain standing. Vivian Nguyen from Bowie High School. Melody Ethely is not able to be here this evening. Grace Kenemir from Lamar High School. Jay Schmidt from Martin High School. Brittany Horn from Sam Houston High School. And the president of this year's SLAB group is Hector Gomez from Arlington High School. So, I would like to introduce the 2014-2015 members of the Student Leadership Advisory Board. At this time, I'm going to ask Leslie Johnson to introduce the portion of this part of the board meeting, which will be pairing them with their board partners.
Uh-oh. Sorry Hector, you're stuck with me.
That's right, we pair each of our SLAB members to, with a board member and they work together throughout the year. So, automatically, our SLAB president is paired with our board president. So, if you want to go stand by Mr. Hogg, Hector. Everyone else will draw their student and then we will match them that way. Melody cannot be here this evening.
Vivian Nguyen of Bowie High School.
Grace Kenemir, Lamar High School.
Grace Sprinkle, Martin High School. Come on down Grace.
Ms. Brittany Horn, come on down. Come on.
Guess who I got?
So, our SLAB members will work with the board members throughout the year and give student input in different decisions that are going on throughout the district. So, we will once again congratulate them and thank them for their upcoming service.
My parents, Andy and Leslie Sprinkle came out today, so.
Hi Grammy, Demi Garland is here and I'm happy to say she's my grandmother.
Thank you. Anything else Leslie?
My mom, Stephanie Schmidt.
Usually, Mr. Hibbs did it the other way, they straightened those out a little bit. I thought that's usually how it works, so. This is a great organization, I must take a second and thank Ms. Sullins and Ms. Johnston and Ms. Smith for all their hard work on this. This is the third year for this group. It's continually getting better. Each year was a crazy idea we had and it was created and all these folks are the junior class presidents. So, it makes sense, they are elected by their peers to represent their schools. So, they give us student input on the district for elected officials ourselves. So, it's a great organization and each year it gets better and better from where it is. So, thank you, thank you to our staff and Ms. Sullins for the hard work on this. Next, we'll move on to Community Engage for Excellence Award of Appreciation. And tonight, I have a great group we get to honor. I had to miss their event this year, but I've been, years passed and it is awesome what you guys put on. The best Johnny Depp look light I've ever seen there. And the first time I walked in, it was truly amazing. But, but let me introduce the Community Advocating for Prosperity and Opportunity, also known in the community as CAPO. CAPO is a community organization whose purpose is to provide relief to the underprivileged in the community they serve and to promote and support adult and youth educational opportunities. In reaching out to youth, CAPO sponsors an annual book carnival that provides summer reading books for elementary students in East Arlington schools. The third annual CAPO Book Carnival was held this past May, two Saturdays ago, correct? In May, which CAPO supplied 13,500 books to nearly 600 children that attended. Over the past three years, CAPO has provided nearly 33,000 books to over 1,500 students. CAPO is committed to continuing and growing this annual event. CAPO continues to support education by striving to keep books in the hands of our children, especially during those times in the summer and get them reading when they're not in school. So, at this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Tanya Kelly, the chairperson of the board. And Ms. Kelly, would you please introduce the, CAPO? I mispronounce things a lot. I know what you do, that's what really matters. So, so Ms. Kelly, would you please introduce the other group members with you?
Thank you very much. I would like to, first the board members, we have Monty Von Gotten. I'm always saying his name wrong. Secretary, we have another board member, David Jackson, he's also with the Public Library. And then the real brains, the real brains behind this whole event that we do, Sophia. And I usually pronounce her name wrong anyway.
Lucy.
Thank you. What I wanted to say, one of the reasons that we focused on this is, I have no children, but I have found out that during the summer, most of our children in the 76010 area code, they don't have any books. And I've understand, I understand now that the first few weeks of the school year, the teachers have to help basically relearn what these students lost over the summer. And we felt that if we can just put books in these children's hands, it's going to help them. It's helping a lot of parents who aren't very familiar with English, learn English by reading with their children and their children reading to them. So, we feel it's a win-win situation and I appreciate the recognition tonight and thank you very much.
And don't sit down yet, Ms. Kelly. And let me say, if you've never had the chance, I encourage everyone to view and attend that book fair. You do, it's amazing. I remember I was like, I'll just swing by the first time and kids out the door.
Out the door, yes.
Waiting to come in. And so, it's so awesome to see how excited they are about reading.
It really is, we don't charge for the books. We are funding it ourselves at the moment and it's like, the look on the children's faces, and yes, it was great when Captain Jack walks in, but the look on their faces makes it all worth it.
That's right.
Makes the whole work worth it.
And Ms. Kelly, Dr. Kavassos and I would like to come down and give you all a small token of our appreciation for the Community Engage for Excellence Award. But also, Mr. Barron, I know you have some comments. Please go ahead as we make our way down.
Thank you, President Hogg. I had the pleasure of attending this year and I knew it was thousands of books. I didn't appreciate that it was 13,000 because the tables were just piled up and the kiddos all had plastic bags and they were filling them up and they were just smiling from ear to ear. But probably the high point was when Captain Jack Sparrow came in, the original one.
Yeah.
The real one. And it was just great. So, you all do a fabulous job and I'm so proud of you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm not standing up here.
We'd like to present you this plaque that hang in the church or wherever you guys have to hang it. Pass it around to the chair. And then also, we'd like to present, just so everyone knows, these are pens that are only allowed to be given out by the Board of Trustees and we give these to those folks that are special in our community. So, we'd like to honor you all with this succinct honor and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's get a picture. There it goes. Right there.
Here we go, one, two, and one more. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good idea, Ms. Peña. Just heard her say some of our recycled books. We need to have a discussion about how we can get more of those to you guys.
Definitely.
Always new ways. So, next, let's move to item C, United Way of Arlington Before and After School Care Report. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And this is a presentation by Cynthia Jensen from the United Way about our after-school programs. Cynthia, welcome.
Thank you very much, President Hogg, other members of the school board, and Dr. Kavassos. Thank you again for this annual look-in at what's happening after school. I saw an article recently about the percentage of time that children spend in the classroom versus the time out of the classroom. This may be old news to you all, but it's pretty compelling how much time out of school children also spend. So, I'm here to tell you a little bit about the state of after-school care in Arlington, or as we refer to it, just out-of-school time is a national way of describing it. And there's some good news and bad news in this report. And one of the things that's happening and has happened over the last few years is the on-campus after-school programs where children end the school day and then walk down the hall to go to a program. These numbers continue to decline. This is probably larger than we had last year, but down 15% this year. And two additional sites lost. But the good news perhaps for you is the increase in the fees that were paid to the AISD for the space. And I should also mention, I trust you've all received a full copy of the report that has a lot of rich data in it as well. I'm just hitting the highlights this evening. The off-campus numbers tell a slightly different story in that their numbers are pretty much staying steady. You see a slight 1% drop in the number of youths served in these programs. These are programs like the Boys and Girls Club Branch Sites, the Parks and Recreation Department Rec Center Programs. But you also see that their average daily attendance, in an average day, about how many people attend, how many students attend, you can see that has increased and it continues to increase. But you see, there's still a number of schools and we're particularly concerned, as I say every year, about the elementary schools that don't have any after-school program. These children need such structure after school. And we have seven here. Turning Point is mentioned as one without, but the providers say providing an after-school program at Turning Point with the short tenure of students at that campus is not very realistic, so. And then a couple of the junior high school, Young Junior High School and Martin Adventure also, currently not having any structured after-school programs. And I thought I'd show you this year a map because it's somewhat telling. You can see Turning Point out there by Lake Arlington is sort of an anomaly. And then you can see up in the top center, Cookin, the preschool. But the remainder of the other elementary schools you can see are all in East Arlington, east of Collins. So, it just is a visual representation of schools that are without any kind of after-school program. And again, I'm presenting this on behalf of the after-school providers. Boys and Girls Club of Arlington, Girls Incorporated, the YMCA of Arlington, the Parks and Rec Department. And this year, we included some data in the report from the Salvation Army because they provided a program during the 2012-2013 school year at Crow Elementary. So, their numbers are included in here. And just to refresh that the goals of the after-school programs, whether they're on-campus or off-campus, are largely in sync with the goals of the strategic plan around providing structured and safe place for children to be after school, to work on academic achievement, and is also a benefit to the parents as well. The two-way flow of information is so critical to a lot of these programs. And again, one of the issues has to do with the personal relationship that the programs have with the principal, has an effect on the health of the school, after-school program per school.
As I strengthen this partnership with this wonderful opportunity that we have for our students in the after-school programs, we want to make sure that what we do, and we look in the future to making sure that we schedule consistent meetings with AISD Campus Leadership to more intentionally plan and review and promote the programs to both our students, parents, and our staff.
Thank you. And again, still desirous of reaching some agreement with the school district by about the January timeframe in terms of schools that are going to be available for the summer. A couple of our providers, namely the YMCA of Arlington and Girls Incorporated, routinely run after-school, or summertime programs for elementary-age children at schools. And the sooner that they can get the information about which schools or campuses are going to be available, because you know there's always construction and redoing the gym floor over the summer. So they like to know which schools are going to be available so that they can, in turn, market to the right families in a particular region.
So our goal is to do this in the fall, so that we have that set as much as possible before the spring, so that we have lots of time for planning for that for the summers.
Again, we addressed this last year, and we did have a little bit of a meeting on it, but I think the providers tell me they're still interested in looking into the idea of working with the district relative to transportation. I know that Salvation Army's been a recipient of AISD-provided transportation, and the other providers, especially the off-campus providers, are interested in continuing that conversation for the coming year.
Our Office of Dropout Prevention, headed by Wendy Carrington, does a great job with this program. And what we want to make sure that we do is we seize any opportunity that we can to utilize existing routes and just look at possibilities and opportunities that we might have to provide some additional help in the after-school programs.
And the last thing I'll lift up just has to do with the way that after-school care programs are invited onto elementary schools. You may remember, I may have said this before, but in the '80s and '90s, when schools were being built every year, there was some competition among providers about who was going to go into which school. And in the, I want to say, the early '90s, United Way Arlington stepped in to create a rotation system. And that worked fine then, again, for many years, but then we just had a gap until Adams opened, of no schools opening. And when Adams opened, Wendy Carrington at the Dropout Prevention Office and I talked, and we, the school district, did an open proposal process. And the providers are desirous of continuing that method of, as new schools, again, particularly elementary schools, are established, to look at who's going to provide a program.
And so, as we look toward next year and then the work through our bond program, we will keep the same process in place that worked well for Adams Elementary School.
Again, and finally, these next few words just have to do primarily with the on-campus programs, which are licensed by the state and generally have a higher cost of delivering these programs. And their licensing requires them to have a certain amount of square footage, ability to store some materials, and again, back to the two-way flow of communication between the providers and the school. I'm not saying that this is a problem across the school, across the district. Every now and then, there's a problem with a particular school, but it's still, we're still not at the place, I think, where we want to be with all of these issues ironed out. So... Oh, sorry.
Kind of a partner thing tonight. So in an effort to strengthen the communication and collaborative efforts between the programs, the Office of Dropout Prevention will establish general meetings with campus principals where they're designated to review and plan and assess the program's key areas, program requirements, program promotion of programs to both parents and campus staff, transportation opportunities, and our logistics.
So thank you, Evan, for that assist there. I guess the big takeaway, I would say, two things. One is, you know, we've appreciated the ability to work with Wendy Carrington and just desire to keep having the lines of communication open in terms of ironing out problems as they occur. And then the second thing is, that we really have our eye on, is this concern about on-school programs diminishing both in location as well as in size. So that's my report for this evening. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. At this time, we'll take some questions from trustees. Dr. Esh.
Thank you, President Hogg. Thank you for the information. It's compelling. I have one question, probably for Ms. Smith. As far as working with the, on the district side, the Office of Dropout Prevention, what's the planned timetable or the target? Is it to try to work on this as much as possible, all these areas, to have it maybe ready for the fall? Or what's the idea that you've discussed?
Well, actually, I believe we're trying to set a meeting next week to begin that process, to make sure that we've got a strategy for the whole entire year mapped out.
Okay. Okay. Okay, great. And then, Ms. Jensen, with the numbers decreasing as far as youth served and the sites, what do you think is the overarching, or is there a primary reason that you can think of? And is it reflected in the space things, or is it just that the kids aren't and the families aren't doing it? They're doing something else? Or do you have any ideas?
I do have some ideas. One is, the on-campus programs are more expensive to run, because you have to have licensed staff, because they are more fee-based. Of course, they have scholarships, but there comes a point where an agency can only carry or handle so many scholarships, and they have to be able to have some income coming in. And they've found, they've just found some areas where they're providing 100% of the services without any parent helping with the cost. So I would say that's one of the main drivers. It's just, it's just a fact of the lay of the land in nonprofit right now, with shrinking budgets, shrinking resources. But it leads me to another point, and that is, we do want to know more about, in some cases, in some schools, where the after-school program is rarely used, even if it's available. And would love to, at a later point, talk about what would it take to find out more? What kind of assessment do we need to do that goes deeper than these numbers to find out things that parents would say, things that students would say about what they want out of after-school programs?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Hibs.
Dr. Rice actually hit on the second point. So with the diminishing numbers, you think it's more because of the cost of the program? It's not a matter of sites not being opened up or the promotion of the, you know, being able to draw those in, but more on the financial aspect?
I do. I don't think there's any school in Arlington that said, "No, we don't want this." I don't think that's the case at all. I think it's, I think it's a cost issue.
Okay. I know that, a few years ago, we actually had the 21st Century Grant, and that's something that I think that we moved away from and we were going to look at and repurpose. I would definitely like to encourage our departments to look at these grant fundings and help wherever we can in this area. I don't know exactly all the reasoning why that went away, but if there's, working with these organizations, I think it's the perfect match to be able to do that whenever possible.
Agree, Mr. Hibs. I'll give you some comments in a second. Ms. Mays.
Thank you, Cynthia, and thank you for allowing me to ask my first question as a board member. This is probably a question and maybe a comment, just looking at the map. And thank you very much for including the map, because I do think it really helps to see where a lot of the need or the lack of the after-school programs are. And I think what's interesting to me, though, is that they all do line up right there in East Arlington, which is the heaviest populated area in the school district. So for me, that was kind of surprising to see that. As far as the communication, the two-way communication with principals, do you know if we have that same two-way communication with principals at these schools where it's not located? To understand, is there a need? Is this something that they've requested and they're not receiving? Is there communication with the principals at the schools that currently do not have the program?
I know that there has been some conversation previously with providers. I don't know, I couldn't tell you the status of that now. Many of the providers used to be in these schools, and some of them are the ones they've had to cut back on. And again, as was mentioned, the 21st Century Grant used to also support not all of the missing elementary schools, but a great deal.
Okay. When we were talking about assessments, I think I would like to see an assessment of the places where it's thriving, and it seems to be beneficial, and a lot of students are participating. So why, like you said, that digging deeper, why is that the case? Then for the schools where it's not, let's have, I'd like to see an assessment that says, "Well, we do need it. We'd like to have it, and why not?" And understanding money being an issue, but I just want to point out that for the Achieve Today, Excel Tomorrow, the strategic plan portion, there's one, two, three, four, five reasons why you provide helps with that strategic plan. So if it's money, whatever other issue it is, I think that that warrants something to look at. But thank you for the services that you provided. My children got to benefit from Girls, Inc. in Elementary School, and they really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Ms. Jensen, thank you for this report. And as the, I'm currently the Chair of United Way Arlington, and we had a deep discussion with Ms. Jensen and our entire committee over this. And it really took a deep dive into this report, and it does come down to some of the financial pieces from the nonprofits. Ever since '08, they've taken a hit. More of our parents can't fund to be involved in that group. I think as a board, we've got to take some deep-dive looks of, do we somehow eat some of those costs of what it costs to be on our district? Do we put things in our legislative agenda to push our after-school, out-of-school-time care for this 2015 session that costs us a lot of money, because we're required by the state to have licensed people in our after-school care? Do we push that on the legislative agenda for some lightening of those rules in our legislative agenda? And then, as Mr. Hibs and Ms. Mays said, I think we've got to take some alternative funding ideas on there. Is this something that's worthwhile for us to fund, maybe through our own grant procedure, through Gaswell Funds, through some of those monies that we've got to look at and say? And the whole time, looking at all this, and I'm looking at Mr. Peralas, do these, our Director of Community Engagement, do these things bring enough value for us to justify those dollars to there? I would suppose they do, but of course, we're always going to want to see the stats. But I think, as a board and a staff, Dr. Kavassos says you all have this meeting, I think we've got to be willing to say what some of those alternative funding sources we can bring in and utilize this to be able to assist our providers on that.
And I would comment that the vast majority of the schools have the after-school programs.
Right.
And a large number of elementary schools. And best practice, I think, is a good review. I think, Mr. Hibs, you're right about the 21st Century Grant. That took a hit in our district. We didn't lose the grant. I mean, it expired, basically. But I think we should review other sources and talk to the providers and the service providers, because they have a big, you know, say in this in terms of whether they want to come into a school, and their financials as well. So I think that two-way communication is important.
Perfect. Dr. Rice, yeah, final statement.
Just a question on the fees. If we have a decrease in attendance, why are our fees going up? Is it just that it's more costly on our end to uphold? Or that seems to be counterintuitive to me.
It seems the organizations...
Okay.
The fees are for space.
Okay.
And so they, if they use the gym or classrooms and things like that, and they draw the attendance. I mean, the service provider is the one who recruits and makes sure kids come and follows up with the parents and things like that.
Right.
There could have been a decrease in some, Dr. Rice, and some that use more space or charging more.
Okay.
Something of that nature.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
So, perfect. Thank you, Ms. Jensen. I know we're going to have more deep-dive meetings over this, and I think it's, you know, listen, not all news is great news, but it's news we all need to hear to make sure we can act upon it. So I thank you for your time, and Ms. Smith, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I see a young man that's ready to have his mom appointed. I understand. I'm with him also. And right after that, we will take a break. So those of you that I know need to leave the meeting, we have one last piece, and then we'll have a short break and a reception if you'll be able to leave. So at this point, we'll move on. We'll move on. He's ready to go. I understand. So move on to appointments. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for the Assistant Principal of Owlesley Junior High School.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Solins and a second by Mr. Hibs. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, all trustees voting the affirmative. Dr. Kavassos, introduce.
Thank you, President Hogg. And I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal of Owlesley Junior High, Ms. Allison Fan. Allison attended the University of California, Los Angeles, and received her Bachelor of Arts in English, and then University of Texas at Arlington to receive her Master of Education and Educational Leadership. Most recently, a sixth-grade language arts teacher in Mansfield ISD, and has taught sixth through eighth grade reading and writing in the Los Angeles Unified School District. Allison, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Thank you so much. Good evening, Dr. Kavassos, President Hogg, and members of the board. I feel so honored to be here in front of you, and I thank you for the opportunity to join Arlington ISD. And I look forward to supporting the objectives in the strategic plan, and I am completely excited to fulfill my responsibility as an instructional leader at Owlesley Junior High School, serving the students, the staff, and the community to the best of my abilities.
Could you introduce anyone?
Yes. I have my wonderful family, my husband, who is my biggest cheerleader and support, and my two children, Christopher, who gave up his sixth-grade award banquet for me today because he wanted to be here to celebrate with me, and my little baby, who is graduating from kindergarten this Friday.
Wow. Congratulations. Was it worth it to give up your sixth-grade awards? It was. Pretty cool. Your mom's going to do a good job. We're proud of her, so...
Thank you.
This is way better than any of those sixth-grade awards you ran there. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
As is our custom, we'd ask you to please follow Mr. Cale out into the lobby of our receiving line, so we can greet you and welcome you to the district.
Thank you.
We will take a break. If you would, please let the board go first. We will reconvene about eight, right after 8:30. Thank you. Was it worth it to give up your sixth-grade awards? It was pretty cool. Your mom's going to do a good job. We're proud of her, so.
Thank you.
This is way better than any of those sixth-grade awards you ran there. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
As is our custom, we'd ask you to please follow Mr. Cale out into the lobby of our receiving line so we can greet you and welcome you to the district. We will take a break. If you would, please let the board go first. We will reconvene about eight, right after 8:30. Thank you. Call this meeting back to order at 8:39 PM. We'll move into our public hearing. Next, we'll open our public hearing on Optional Flexible School Day Program 2013-2014. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Hogg, and at this time, I'd like to ask Wendy Carrington to come up and tell us about the Optional Flexible Day Program.
President Hogg, School Board, Dr. Kavasos, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. This year, in Optional Flexible School Day Program, we served 694 students. 363 of those students were allowed to be on a flexible schedule either at their home school or at 600 New York. 331 of those students attended an after-school program at 600 New York, earning up until now, we don't have the final tally, more than 200 credits. So very pleased with what we've been able to do and the number of students we've been able to help the past year with Optional Flexible School Day programming.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Carrington. This is an open forum. Ms. Jones, do we have any cards? Seeing as we have no comments from the audience, the public hearing, Optional Flexible School Day Program 2013-2014 is now closed. Move on to the next item. We'll open our public hearing on Optional Flexible School Day Program 2014-2015. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Hogg, and Wendy Carrington again.
OFSDP may be used for students grades nine through 12 who are at risk of dropping out of school. The program allows for a flexible schedule that does not meet the traditional 180-day, five-day-per-week requirement. Students might instead attend on weekends, night classes, extended-day classes, or flexible schedules. The district can receive funding based on the actual time a student is in attendance from as low as 45 minutes a day to a maximum of 10 hours a day. Minutes are accumulated to maximize the ADA a student can earn during each 12-month period. Students must apply to participate, they must meet eligibility requirements, they must be afforded certified instructors and all educational services for which they are eligible, and must make the appropriate, take the appropriate assessment during the regularly scheduled assessment. And I forgot to mention that this year, in the summer, we will collect funds as well. This will be the first time we've ever collected funds in the summer, so that will be additional funding for the district. I wanted to throw that in.
That's a good, good thing to throw in. So Ms. Jones, and I'll ask Ms. Benjamin this time, because Ms. Jones is close to retirement. Ms. Jones, or Ms. Benjamin, do we have any cards? Perfect. Seeing as we have no comments from the audience, the public hearing on Optional Flexible School Day Program 2014-15. Yes, sir, Mr. Barron.
I have a question.
Question, sure. Go right ahead, Mr. Barron.
Hi, Ms. Carrington.
Hi.
Do any of these students get to the point where we can actually graduate them?
Yes, sir. I don't have the count on the ASA students yet, because we're still finishing, the teachers are finishing up the grades and the, and like of that. But we had 45 just at 600 New York, and we have 30 more that we think will graduate between now and August. So for a full year, it looks like we're going to have about 75 students of those to graduate. And the ASA students, a lot of those are all different grade levels. So they, we're trying to get them back on grade level, so they might not be ready to graduate, but we're trying to get them caught up. So not all of the kids that attend the program are ready to graduate. Some of them are attending the program because we want to get them back to where they need to be.
And then, would they go back to their regular school?
A lot of them, the ones in the ASA are at their regular school during the day. They come to our 600 New York Avenue, our building, which doesn't have a name. I just thought I'd throw that in. They.
It has a name of 600 New York, just not after a person.
Okay. So they, they come after school, and then, that's 331 of them. Those are regular students, and they come from every single campus in the district.
The ones who do graduate, do they go back to their parent high school to graduate with their class? Or do they graduate in the summer, with the summer graduates?
It varies. Some of them choose to just have a ceremony with us at our building. Some of them choose to go back to their campuses, and they actually graduate with their campuses. And some of them will graduate this summer, so they do all of the above.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. And Ms. Barron, I apologize for not seeing your light. Seeing as we have no comments from the audience, thank you, Ms. Carrington. The public hearing on Optional Flexible School Day 2014-15 is now closed. We'll move to open forum for agenda items. I see no cards, unless I'm corrected. Perfect, no cards, so we will close the open forum for agenda items. We'll move to action item A, Consider 2014-15 Board of Trustees Meeting Calendar. This is the calendar, as we've discussed in previous meetings, that you have in your packet for the regular sessions, meeting work sessions, and work sessions for 2014-2015, with our traditional schedule of first Thursday as regular meeting, and the third Thursday being work sessions, except for special months of December, January, and June, and then March. So four of them. Drinking it, well, we fix it up. So at this time, I'd open it up for any motion.
Move to approve?
Thank you, Ms. Panias, everyone else is deciding. I have a motion by Ms. Panias and a second by Mr. Barron. Any discussion on the board work calendars? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Hibbs, do you have a question? Just? Okay. Seven trustees present, seven trustees voting the affirmative. We have our meeting calendars for the calendar year. Next, we'll move to action item B, Consider and Take Action on a Resolution Appointing Consultants and Directing Staff and Consultants to Prepare for the Issuance and Sale of Bonds. Dr. Kavasos?
We'd like to recommend board approval.
Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution appointing consultants and directing staff and consultants to prepare for the issuance and sale of bonds for the district's unlimited tax school-building bonds, taxable series 2014A.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Mays. I have a motion by Ms. Mays and a second by Ms. Panias. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven trustees present, seven trustees voting in the affirmative. Good, good first motion, Ms. Mays. Next, we'll move to discussion action item, Consider 2014-15 Financial Futures Committee Recommendations. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Hogg, and last board meeting, we had a discussion about the FFC recommendations, and this board meeting, Cindy Powell will present those items that administration has looked at and also is recommending. Cindy?
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasos, good evening. As Dr. Kavasos just mentioned, at the last board meeting, the FFC members were here and presented their report to the board, and our staff has reviewed recommendations, and we have categorized those recommendations into two different categories, if you will. We are beginning now our conversations in earnest about next year's budget. And so as we move over the next few weeks, we will consider the FFC recommendations and make recommendations to you for how to proceed with those recommendations. So the FFC made a total of 35 recommendations. Twenty-one of them actually received majority vote. One was a no vote, and the remainder were withdrawn. So there are a total of 21 recommendations that were presented to the board at the last meeting. Those recommendations totaled $4.3 million, and that is our current estimate of what those recommendations will cost. And we'll discuss a couple of adjustments that we've made, two estimates based on staff's information that we're bringing forward this evening. So I'll go through these rather quickly. The first, what you're going to notice is that, in general, very general statement here, the items that we mark as study further are either new positions, or they deal with compensation in some form, either salary increases, equity adjustments, or health insurance. And so as we move over the next few weeks and looking at our budget, we'll bring more of those items forward as we have more information on the overall budget picture. There are several positions in here that we will discuss, but for a large part, the positions will come, we'll bring those back for discussion as we bring administration's recommendations for staffing needs. So in looking at the items that we recommend to the board for action at this point, these are items that we believe we are recommending as administration that the board approve and that we add into the budget that we'll discuss in a few minutes. Those include funding for student academic competitions, $100,000. We began that last year. We added money into the budget for funding student academic competitions, UIL-A+. And so this is a recommendation that we expand those offerings and make more offerings available to the schools. And then also, lead GT teacher coordinator at each campus. This would involve paying a stipend to a teacher at each elementary school campus to lead those GT functions and coordinate that function on the campus. So a $1,000 stipend for each of those individuals, plus the Medicare and the TRS care on that stipend. And then funding for marketing summer camp opportunities. This is a request that we share and market to our students, not only opportunities that we have in the ISD during the summer, but programs offered by other entities. And so we recommend that we go forward with that as well. There's a recommendation from FFC that we add counselors to the junior highs and high schools. The FFC recommended that we add as many as 26 positions at the high schools and junior high schools. We told FFC that we were going to develop a needs-based formula to examine the number of counselors that we deemed to be appropriate at those levels. And so Rick Garcia and Nell Fielding have worked with a committee of high school league counselors, and separately, a committee of junior high league counselors on that. And we can stop either at this point or continue through, and I think we'll just continue through, but we have information that we can share with you on that formula. Our needs-based formula yields a total of 18 additional counselors, six at the junior highs, and additional 12 at the high schools, for a total of $1.1 million. So that is less than the FFC had originally recommended. There was a recommendation that we fund a universal screener. This is a software system that allows teachers to assess the skill level of students in reading and math. And so we had talked with FFC about this, and we pared this back a bit to a pilot project from just a wide-scale implementation. I think we have, we're looking at the possibility of 20 elementary schools and several junior highs and high schools to pilot that this upcoming year. So we estimate the cost would be $350,000 for the software and the training there. And then another recommendation would be to add parent orientations on graduation requirements at our junior high schools. We have our CTHEI course, and there's a tremendous amount of this in that course. So the recommendation was, though, that we have a more intense orientation at the junior high schools to make sure parents know before students begin selecting courses for their freshman year what the new graduation plans look like, what the endorsement plans are, and what the choices are that students can make. So we do recommend that we go forward with that. We think that's something that the schools can incorporate pretty readily with the CTHEI course and programs that they already offer. So we don't believe that there will be any additional cost for that. Implementing additional programming for the strategic plan, this was really a training recommendation to make sure that all of our employees fully understand and appreciate what their role is in helping the district achieve the strategic plan. We believe that this is a very key element within the new staff appraisal instrument that will be developed in this upcoming year, which in and of itself is a key component of the strategic plan. So we don't believe that this will cost us anything, and this will be an element of individual evaluations, appraisals. And so we recommend that we do go forward with that. There was a recommendation that we implement a class-size accountability mechanism for classes that exceed 30 students. This is at the high school level. For several years, FFC had focused on very small classes because they're a little more costly, and they wanted us to tighten that up and to look at our funding or our staffing formulas to make sure that we were staffing appropriately and possibly reduce the need for some teaching positions. As we've moved over the last few years, what we see is a much smaller number of those small classes. The vast majority of our classes now have between 21 and 30 students in them at the high school level, in the core classes. There are about 10% of all of our core classes at the high school level that have enrollment greater than 30. And that's actually down a little, even from the year before, it was 11%. So it's those larger classes that the FFC was interested in. And so the recommendation was that we simply create a process where a principal would report to administration why it is that they want to have a class, a core class, with more than 30 students in it. And this is not an avenue to gain additional staff. It's more about looking at how you allocate your students across the master's schedule. And so we have, we recommend that we go forward with that. The other items on this slide are items that we recommend that we bring back as we move through the budget processes, we gain a little more information from various stakeholders on those areas. And that includes creating family engagement teams at campuses that don't already have them. Those would be the non-Title I campuses. Funding for student council leadership camps, and also allowing uniformed police officers to eat in our schools for free. All of the items on this slide you see are marked for further study. These are items that either have to do with positions or potential salary adjustments. And again, as we get more information in the next couple of weeks on the entire budget picture, we will be bringing back our recommendations on these. One of these has to do with increasing the district's contribution towards employee health insurance. The TRS Board is meeting Thursday and Friday of this week, and at that meeting, they will set premiums for next year's plan here. And so once we have that information, we'll have a truer look at the entire cost of that insurance, and we feel like we'll be in a better position to make a recommendation back to the board. And then finally, we have two items that we recommend the board proceed with, and one is to recommend that the board review the entire healthcare program. In the year three, the action of the strategic plan, there is an activity to create a wellness program for staff and students. And so this will take place inside of that activity. We don't have an estimated cost on that particular component of it, but that is something that we will already be planning for as part of the strategic plan activities. And then finally, funding for an SAT online course, $25,629. And we do recommend that the board go ahead and approve that, and we will place that into the budget for next year. So there, out of the 21 recommendations that FFC presented to the board, we are bringing tonight 10 of those and recommending that the board approve those. If you approve them, we will go ahead and add that into the budget that we bring back to you next week. We're going to have a budget discussion here in a few minutes. These items are not yet in the budget, but if you approve them, then we will add them for the presentation we make next week. The sum of the remaining items that we still need to bring back to the board, $2.6 million. So with that, again, we recommend that we move forward with the recommendations that we are recommending for approval, and those total $1,679,412. That, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, and to my colleagues, I would say, let's circle back, and first, let's have the discussion. I think everyone wants to hear about the counselor piece. I know that's a hot button for every single person up here. And on these other items, I think it's, find those pieces to say, Ms. Powell, yes, we want these in the budget, and as they come through, we can either take action and approve them tonight, or we can have them built in the budget and then prove as a budget as a whole together. It's kind of our choice of how we want to do this from the questions. So with that, Ms. Powell, I would say, Ms. Felding? So with that, Ms. Powell, I would say, Ms. Felding, how do we want to?
I think it's Mr. Garcia is going to make that presentation. And so I'm going to mute this while Mark switches the PowerPoints.
We thought we were going to get away pretty easily, right? Well, good evening, President Hogg, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. Good to see all of you. We'll try to make this fairly brief, but of course, we are open to any questions you might have. Looks a little bit dark up there. But let me start, first of all, the state is very prescriptive in regard to the components that a guidance and couns-- thank you. The components that a guidance and counseling program should have at every school district. And you'll see these four that are up here, responsive services. I'm not going to go through all of them in great detail, but basically responsive meaning, being able to attend to students' immediate needs and concerns such as crisis counseling that could occur in individual or group settings. Individual planning is pretty much what it entails when you look at just the definition itself, but really it's ongoing systemic activities and establishing personal goals and developing future plans for students. And you'll see the slew of things that our counselors do when it comes to individual planning. And by the way, under individual planning, we are, there's no assumption here, but the PGP, the Personal Graduation Plan, will fold right nicely under this. So that's one thing that we will certainly consider beginning in the fall of 2014. A third component, guidance curriculum. Again, this is designed for students and it's designed to attain desired competencies to provide all students with the knowledge, attitudes, and skills, et cetera, that they need. In Texas, there are seven components that fall under guidance curriculum that the state recommends, the T E A recommends for every school district. Oddly enough, I put down here on the right-hand corner, if you look at post-secondary institutions, a lot of these components are also being infused in freshman orientation classes at the university or college level. A lot of the times, they call them first-year experience, and that is pretty common. So one can only imagine if we were to strengthen these areas in our district, how better prepared students might be by the time they get to the post-secondary experience. The last component entails system support, and that's really about services and activities that indirectly benefit students. And I won't read all those bullets to you, but you can see how in our school system, we follow the same procedures. So again, those are four major components that the state recommends that every school district have in place. If we look at maybe a pie chart, as you see here in front of me or in front of you, the four components are then laid out by the state. And when it comes to junior highs, you'll notice that the larger pieces of right here where it says 30 to 40%, this is responsive services, where the state says that every school district should have a guidance and counseling program at the junior high level where 30 to 40% of their time, and this is counselors, is spent on responsive services. And then you can also make sense out of the other three quadrants or sections, like 35% to 40% being spent in guidance curriculum, 10 to 15% spend on system support, and then finally, the 15 to 25% spent on individual planning. You'll notice that there's a zero up here. That simply indicates that the state doesn't take into account non-guidance activities that a counselor might be fulfilling on his or her campus. Not that that's not a thing that the state does not recommend. Certainly, that's a local decision where a school district might say, well, I need my counselors to do a little bit more on the testing area, or I need my counselor to do a little bit more in a different indirect area. When we compare ourselves to the state, this is what the state recommends and this is where we are at. So there's obviously a discrepancy, and you'll see that these big chunks where it's 45%. The 45% having to do with individual planning, so our counselors at the junior high level are about 5% above what the state recommends would be at 40% the max. And then the small slivers here of 3%, 3%, and 4%, that entails the areas of individual planning, responsive services, and system support. So a clear distinction there, how there's work to be done in this area. And then, of course, the last piece here, the 45%, these are non-guidance duties that our counselors at the junior high level are undertaking. When we look at the high school, it's a little bit more balanced, and this is what the state is recommending for all four components. When we compare ourselves in the high school arena to the state, we're pretty close, with the exception of maybe individual planning where it's at 40.8%, so we're a little bit above, 5%, 0.8 above what the state recommends. When it comes to responsive services, we're at 21.6, or just a little bit, just a little bit below from what the state recommends as well. When we look at non-guidance, we're obviously at 7.2, so maybe not as drastic of a difference as we saw at the junior high level. But needless to say, there is a little piece that is delving into non-guidance activities. So how did we arrive at these conclusions? And I've got Nell here with me to help me out to answer some of your questions. But we sampled our counseling population and more specifically, our lead counselors from the elementary, junior high, and high school levels. We then identified all the activities and the tasks that they all fulfill throughout their work on the campuses. And I won't go through all these, but with Nell's help, we spent some time with these lead counselors. And you'll see in the guidance component, these are all the things that take place in the high school arena. When it comes to responsive services, those are items that are occurring now. Individual planning, up here, you'll notice this also relates to our limited English proficiency students, our special education students, students that are in the IB dual credit or AP programs. And then system support, again, these are activities that our high school counselors currently undergo. And then other duties that they also partake in throughout the academic year. The last thing we did to arrive at these conclusions was we charged each sample population. In other words, every lead counselor went back to their home campus and consulted with their team of counselors, so they would come back and confirm with us that these activities were actually taking place. So that's how we arrived at these percentiles in a comparison to where the state suggests we should be. Staffing recommendation, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but basically, we're looking at being able to meet the HB5 requirements, and we're talking about high school here, and also looking at the guidance and counseling program compliance, meaning the four components, and being able to match closer to what the state recommends. And then a reduction of the current student-to-counselor ratio. We might have a high school counselor that's maybe serving 500 students. We're certainly interested in decreasing that ratio, so it's a little more doable, for lack of a better word, for our counselors. The expected outcomes, if you have that in front of you, there's four biggies. We want to increase the opportunity for students and counselors to interact more intentionally. What's happening right now, we might be seeing some of the students, but certainly not 100% of the students, because the counselor's time is divvied up among a number of activities. So we want to be more intentional in that area. If we were to fulfill these goals, it will also allow our counselors to spend valuable time with our students to develop an in-depth guidance curriculum in the areas of college and career readiness. If you recall, I talked very briefly about what even what the post-secondary institutions are adhering to or trying to get their freshman class to become familiar with, and those are those seven items. Let's see. Last couple of things under high school. Well, if we were able to meet these goals using this formula, we would be able to provide a systemic support to the campus, families, students, and faculty. And then lastly, we would be able to create a highly successful transition experience for high school, from high school to post-secondary education or career pathway, which is an ultimate goal for our guidance and counseling program. When it comes to our junior high recommendation, it's very similar, again, trying to meet compliance with HB5 and to strengthen our guidance and counseling program. But we're also looking at what we call contact hours. As I mentioned earlier, how much time does a counselor interact with a student? And we're trying to make sure that the contract that our students are, excuse me, our counselors are currently under, a 212-day contract, that all those minutes that a counselor is working for AISD are spent with students. In other words, trying to be as intentional as we can so these students are getting access to the guidance and counseling program. The expected outcomes, as you can see, there's four biggies there as well, from attaining student academic success down to a very seamless transition from junior high to high school. And this is again for our junior high, high school counseling recommendation. The formula, the way we came up with it, again, we looked at the four components that we shared with you just a few minutes ago, but then also looked at being able to keep a balance in those four components throughout the guidance and counseling program from junior high to high school, elementary. Also trying to increase the guidance component, because we feel that in the guidance arena, that's an area we could probably strengthen and beef up so that students are more college-ready, more career-ready as well. And then also the vertical alignment of that guidance curriculum. And vertical alignment, meaning a curriculum that can take a student from elementary or pre-K to 12th grade. Number three, sample of the counselor population. As I shared with you earlier, we met with all the lead counselors at elementary, junior high, and high school to come up with these percentages that you see. We took a mean sample of each. For example, in the high school, we determined that the median was 56.25 minutes per student to complete a PGP, a personal graduation plan. And again, if all of you were lead counselors, maybe one of you would say, I spent 120 minutes with a student to complete their personal graduation plan. Another, one of you might say, well, I spent 45 minutes. And so we took the sample of all the lead counselors and found the median, and that was the median, which was 56.25 minutes. We also, to develop the formula, looked at the contact hours, as we mentioned earlier, meaning how many minutes are required for us to be able to meet each component's criteria and campus student needs, and students from LEAP to special ed, et cetera, all the subgroups of students that we work with. And then the last few items, the required counselor time in minutes to be able to meet the personal graduation plan, as I just gave you a quick example of the medium that we found to be able to fulfill the PGP. Lastly, available contact hours, minutes to meet the AISD's premier guidance and counseling components, and then, of course, campus enrollment. One would assume that we would start there, and we did, but we honed in on the components that the state says, here's what you should really have. And that's what we're aiming for, to have a premier guidance and counseling program. So projected staffing. Based on the figures that we had, what we're looking at, for example, let me blow this up a little bit more. We were looking at Arlington High School, which currently has an enrollment of 2879. We would recommend the addition of two counselors, Bowie Two, and you can read the rest as we keep going down the row to include the junior highs, where Bailey Junior High currently has 852 students. We would add another counselor to that school. And our special thanks to our lead counselors for taking time. We pulled them over about six times between January and March to be able to take these figures, and then we gave them some charges to go back to their home campus to consult with their colleagues so we could have as accurate as possible of data. And to Lori Leaverton, as you might recall, she is the early college high school counselor that just started a few months ago, but she's a math specialist as well. Well, she's a mathematician, so we used her math skills to help us double-check these numbers to make sure we were right on track. So we will take any questions you might have.
A counselor and a math specialist.
You got it. That's kind of unusual, but yes.
I'd say, I'd say the least. The lights are lighting up. Mr. Barron, you're flashing. I don't know if that's from earlier or right now. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. When we first saw House Bill 5, it was pretty obvious to this board that we would need more counselors, and we recommended that the district aggressively go out and hire counselors, and I don't know if that happened.
Silence.
Good question. No, I think, I think until we have openings, we can't hire them, and that's part of this process. And it did take a time for us to process the real need. You know, like Rick said, we started with the numbers of students, and that really doesn't show you the true need of what you need in counselors. I think at this point, and that's part of earlier discussion, I'll bring it up now, is if the board approves this recommendation, then we move forward and we post the positions and we go, or we wait till the budget process is complete at the end of June. So there's some options there, I think, that the board can consider tonight.
It's a big decision.
Mrs. Peña brought this up earlier, and that we, I think the sooner we go looking, the better chances we'll have to get the people we want, because everybody in the state's going to be doing the same thing.
Yep.
I'm going to let, if you don't mind, Ms. Fielding come up here and just kind of answer something very quickly that was related to, she was waiting or not expecting to come up, but there was a question that I, I think I heard that has to do with when we first started looking at counseling positions and why we didn't go the route of just looking at enrollment numbers, period. And what did we hear from our lead counselors?
Well, when, when you began to talk with the counselors, the needs are different from campus to campus, and we had to take that into consideration. At Martin High School, they have a huge dual-credit enrollment that takes a lot of time, so we had to look at that. At Sam Houston, their needs are different with the students they serve, so we looked at that. So in creating the formula, we took all of that into consideration, not just looking at the number of students you have and this many counselors.
Oh, I understand that completely, but I don't think anybody would have expected us to lose, to say we have too many counselors.
Correct.
After looking at House Bill 5. So we should have been looking for counselors.
And I think, Mr. Barron, part of the issue there is that as we look for counselors and we post campus-specific, it's very difficult to hire a counselor for a campus when they may not get a counselor at the end. If you notice some of the pictures, some of the projections there, some schools are not getting another counselor.
Why are we posting campus-specific?
Because that's the, that's the leadership team. That's how we post our principal positions, assistant principal. If they want to be a counselor at Bowie High School, then they apply to be a counselor at Bowie High School. And they understand the needs and they do their research, and they interview and compete for that position. And I think that that has yielded some strong results in terms of our principal and assistant principal candidates, when they have to research and understand the school and the context of where they're, they're going to work. And from our standpoint, that yields the best results instead of a pool, and then we try to assign them based on what we think versus a principal and a team and vetting out the candidates. So it's kind of a balance, because, you know, we can't just hire if we're not going to add to some schools and which schools are going to get counselors versus which are not, and that's part of tonight's discussion.
Okay, I had some questions on the rest of the FFC, but we'll stay with this for now. Thank you.
Yeah, perfect. Mr. Barron, let's stay on this right now, and we'll get to the rest of that in just a second. I can't see you because of Ms. May's pretty flowers right there, but it's a good thing. So, Ms. Peña.
Okay, so let's say we approve this tonight. We, we've identified the number of counselors we need. What plan is in place to quickly and swiftly move to hire counselors? And the reason I keep asking this is because House Bill 5 created an environment where the whole state of Texas is going to be looking for counselors, and there is going to be a shortage. We don't want to be left with the shortage. So is there a plan in place?
And the first and foremost, kind of the general thinking in terms of our human resources, and Scott can certainly address this, is we're going to find the very best. And so, you know, sometimes that's difficult with some of our positions that we have to leave open until we find the very best. And in this case with counselors, we're going to recruit and aggressively recruit like we recruit principals, assistant principals, et cetera. But our standard is we don't, we're not going to fill them to fill. And then there is a need, and there is going to be, I don't know if there is a shortage or not, maybe Nell, you can speak more to that, but that we, we apply the same standard as we fill positions, and we find the absolute best based on our very rigorous vetting-out process that we have, not only at the central level with Nell, but with the schools.
So how quickly are you going to move once we say do it?
Then, then we start as soon as you approve the positions. Yeah, absolutely.
Like tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Ms. Peña, can I ask a follow-up on that? I know Ms. Felding and maybe Mr. Cale, in the past, they've had to have fully completed their masters for us to be able to hire them. Is there any flux because of Ms. Peña's comments of, if someone's maybe completing their courses and they're about to get their degree at the end of the summer, could they be hired to start? Or are they completed, but they haven't gotten their official certification? Or I don't know, is there any flux in that?
I was hired in that situation. I was not completely certified and was hired at Sam Houston. But then the district changed those requirements. And speaking to the amount of applicants, there was a time when we would have two or three applicants for a position. When we were at Sagin, one time, we had three applicants, and that was it. Last year, when we would post positions, we'd have 87 applicants. Were all those highly qualified? No. But we did have a good pool of qualified people applying in our district. We could see a diminution of that with the amount of openings that's going to be around in the district. But currently, we are required for those people to be fully certified.
And the reason we did that was because there was never any follow-up to ensure they got their masters.
Agree 100% with that, Ms. Peña. I think it's, Ms. Felding, I, Ms. Fielding-- I think it's, Ms. Fielding, I, Ms. Fielding, I would throw it to you, if there is a consideration, if we are potentially at a shortage, I think this board's willing to consider saying, "At this interim timeframe, we maybe adjust that." And there may not be a need for that. If there's no need, by all means, let's leave it, but.
The board made the rule.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If, if it needs to come back, and just for this interim, I think this board would consider tweaking it for this interim time to make sure we get these positions filled, and then hopefully in the future, we can go back to.
Honestly, I think that would be a very good consideration. We have some people who are very close that work in our district.
Right.
Are very close to being certified. We know they're good quality people, but we would not be able to hire them in, in this round.
And Ms. Peña, and I agree with you, we have to make sure there's follow-up, and maybe if we do adjust the rules, we put some form of follow-up in there to be required.
And it wasn't, it wasn't done for a counselor specifically. What happened was that principals and assistant principals were getting.
Masters, I agree. I fully understand, and I think the intense ride, and I think there's ways we can make sure it's followed up on, and they have to send that report in within a six-month timeframe, something of that nature. So, I think it all determines on supply and demand, what's in there. Scott? Sorry, and I didn't mean to jump before my colleagues, but that was directly.
You know, I just wanted to add a couple thoughts. I, I very much appreciate the need for urgency, and as soon as the board approves the positions, I can assure you that literally the next day, we'll be on top of it. I appreciate the concern about the whole state going after the same pool, but I also can tell you that I'm very comfortable that we will be doing some things that I think will be a little bit more progressive and effective than many of the other districts may be doing in terms of how we go about recruiting. I think the way we've gone about recruiting in the past has left us some opportunities to do things a little differently in terms of how we're sourcing. You know, I have an old adage, which, when I talk to people who I know who are unemployed, and they'll tell me the unemployment rate is high, and it's tough, and you empathize with that, but the reality is, I tell them, "You only need one job," and I know there's one job. Well, we only maybe need 18, 20, whatever the number of counselors, and I guarantee they're out there, and we'll, we'll get them before anybody else does. And if we have to be a little bit creative in terms of how we do that, I think there's, there's lots of alternatives to do that. I would not advocate at this point for dropping standards by any means. I think that we go out and we're better in our recruitment practices, and we get people off the top of the, top of the heap. I think the only thing you might do is if you have folks that are about to be certified or about to finish their degree prior to the beginning of the year, I think you would be open to that, but I personally wouldn't, wouldn't compromise and, and say that we would accept folks at this point who don't have all the certifications by the time they start the job, but we'll, we'll get it done.
Perfect. That's what we'd love to hear, Mr. Cale. Mr. Hibbs?
Mr. Garcia, the, the slide that you had on the state comparison for the junior high schools, that's the one that kind of bothers me, is right here is the one with the, we're talking about 45% non-guidance.
Correct.
When, when I look at the breakout, and, and I'm just taking it saying that we looked at the, at 10 junior highs as opposed to the 12 that we, we have right now, we're only talking about a .6 placement of counselors, and this is, and I understand that at some schools, we're talking about different size of populations, but our strategic plan and then what the state is mandating is having, in the eighth grade, these sit-downs with each one of the students. Even if we were, I don't think that this pie chart is going to move that much, that we have some schools where that 45% is anything less than 20. So, my concern is, is that if we don't have appropriate staffing to be able to seriously move that red number, that we're not going to be able to truly meet our goals of being able to have, setting down those, those long-term, you know, educational plans for these students. I guess I'm looking for some kind of certainty that just six, when we've got 12 high, or 12 junior highs today, and maybe in a couple of years, it'll be down to 10, that we're going to be able to be in a position that we have adequate staffing. I, I don't want to get this pushed back after we place six positions, and then another campus is saying, "We're, we're sinking over here, we're struggling." You know, is there a certainty that six is the right number and not one additional at each campus?
Well, again, the formula, the way we did it was by minutes. So, a counselor works, for example, at the high school, 212 days, we converted that into minutes, and then we took, again, the median of how many minutes it takes to fulfill each component. So, we tried to compare it as, as closely we could to apples to apples. I think what you're asking is, is a very good question. One other thing that we're looking at, because, yes, we're fearful, and so were the lead counselors, that were pretty open with us and telling us some of their concerns, but one of the things that had, has also crossed our mind, and along with Ms. Smith, who's been helping us out with all this, was if we hire more counselors, and yet, the 45% of non-guidance activities doesn't go away, instead, it increases, because we now have more people power to address that piece, we're very cognizant of that. So, what we've done, and this is with assistance from our area superintendents, we're also looking at the guidance tech positions, the test facilitators that were approved a few years back. So, we're, we are revisiting that position to make sure that position is, is doing what it was meant to do to begin with. Not that it's changed, but we're just wanting to make sure that we're understanding each other's role. So, as these counselors get hired, we can see that 45% decrease perhaps in the test area, because the guidance techs or the test facilitators are actually spending more time like they should be in the test arena, which is how that position first came to be three years ago. So, I hope that makes a little bit of sense.
I just, and this goes down to the elementary level, and I know we're only talking junior high and high school right now, but I'm, I'm having counselors choose to contact myself, other board members, and, and they're saying, you know, "We're doing so much in the area testing that we're not being able to have that true guidance." And if, you know, I, I thought that the primary goal for a counselor is in guidance, and if so, I would like to see eradication, elimination of that red wherever possible, you know, in, in non-guidance. I think that they're too, they're too well-trained, they're, they're, we've got very educated individuals just marking papers or, or, when I say that, I'm, don't take that as a teacher, I'm taking, I'm talking about just taking tests and making sure that they're processed.
Right.
You know, so, you know, if, if, if we're going in an area of expanding guidance techs, and that's going to eliminate that, those red box, I don't have a problem, but if, if we're saying we're only going to put six positions out there when we've presently have 12 schools, and that's not moving that number is, is, you know, at those other schools, it's not getting that additional person, that's a concern to me.
Sure. Well, Nell, would you like to help with some of this a little bit? I, I know when we did speak with the lead counselors at both junior high and high school, the responses that we got from them were pretty on, on, on the money, for lack of a better word, talking about if we take into account how many minutes I spend as a counselor with this student group, and we figure out that a normal day for me would entail 11 hours, which is our approximate number that we calculated, that it would take for a counselor to fulfill meeting a caseload of 300 to 400 students, the lead counselors were saying, "If we focus on the minutes that I spend working with each individual student, it would be fair for us to say that Campus A will be awarded one or two counselors, and Campus B may not, because Campus B feels like we are meeting the expectation based on the minutes that we're comparing between the components and how many actual minutes I have on my contract with AISD." And, and there's a lot more to discuss. I mean, we, what we're showing you here came about because of HB Five, obviously, but we wanted to hone in a lot more on the guidance components, because we felt like there was the guidance curriculum and the individual planning pieces that needed to be improved upon at all levels. We've had some discussions, as I mentioned earlier, with our area superintendents as well, to look at the guidance tech position, the test facilitator. I'm sure that counselors listening or watching us tonight would love hearing what you're saying about decreasing that 45% piece of the pie, but the reality is also that we don't want to shift the burden to another group, let's say, for example, assistant principals or another campus employee. We, we want to figure this out as, as collaboratively as we can, because the last thing we want, again, is to shift a burden of perhaps testing onto another campus employee that already has a full plate. So, we, this is just really the tip of the iceberg.
And, and I, I know where you're going with that, and you probably think that you've got a board up here that, that isn't entertaining any additional positions. This is the one area that if, if additional positions are needed, I'm, I'm willing to listen to. So, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I can't speak for the other six on this board, but, you know, that is the direction that I'm looking at. I just want to make sure we have the numbers right, because at our junior high level, and I'm not even attempting to speak to the high school, because I believe we do have that, those numbers on the mark, but at our junior high level, we've, we've mandated as part of our strategic plan that we're going to have career plans developed for each one of these students. Those, those students, if we're going to fulfill that, then each student needs to have the appropriate amount of time, and there's only so many hours in a day for those counselors to be able to do it. That, I'll, I'll relinquish the conversation at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs, and Ms. Solins.
Thank you, and Mr. Garcia, Dr. Carvazos and board, I know this is a conversation we've been looking forward to for a long time, I believe, and I know that we all believe, that guidance counseling is a great investment in students, and so, as we've been waiting for the strategic plan to get to this implementation point, certainly been looking forward to this evening, but I do have some questions to help me understand. I think what Mr. Hibbs was, was alluding to, on, on what's the before and after look like on this pie chart after this investment, but I'll just run through them in the order of, that I just jotted them down. And so, once we add these counselors, at the, add this guidance capacity, will all students have contact hours every year with their counselor one-on-one?
No.
We are working on a comprehensive program that every campus would implement, and that it is a program that serves every student.
Every student, every year?
Every student, every year.
But that's not next year with this?
Yes.
Oh, it would?
Yes, we're working on that this summer for, to have a systematic way that we document that every student is touched by the counseling program.
Now, is that in junior high and high schools, or what about elementary schools?
Well, elementary, in a lot of instances, we, we do have good comprehensive programs at certain times of the year, and our students are being served by the counseling department at certain times of the year, and we have data to show that. There are some areas that we need to improve on, that campuses that could use more help for that to be more effective, but in adding physicians and with the mandates from House Bill Five, it gives me an opportunity to say, "Here's what the program should look like, here's the outcomes that we're expecting from the added counselors. This is what it should look like. What does a comprehensive program look like that touches every student? Not a program that just touches this need and this need and this need, but how is every student served?" And House Bill Five really mandates that.
Right, and it, it seems to me that the spirit of House Bill Five is more of on a one-to-one and not a group, you know, counselor in a classroom talking about general opportunities available to, you know, their, their cohort based on age or what have you, but individualized guidance counseling. So, that's what you're talking about, contact hours being individual.
Correct.
So, the, the PGP that, you know, and I saw that on the list, that it would be, that is part, the, the development of the PGP is on the list, but what about the follow-up annually, like, like an academic checkup on where we are on that PGP?
Well, the PGP for the ninth graders, we're hoping to accomplish in the fall, certainly. And then, every year, when we do registration for the next school year, there's an individual conference. This, this will be the system. There'll be an individual conference with that student to say, "Okay, where are you? What did you do first semester? Have your goals changed? Have your endorsement interests changed? Where are we? What are we doing, and what does it look like?" That's for the, pretty much for the student that's on track, and first, and, and so, there will be that contact, and there should be a PGP for every student. House Bill Five puts some very specific things in for ninth graders, but the goal is that every student will have a PGP.
But, but then every year, there will be a checkup to that PGP?
Yes, yes.
So, that it's not just a document that happens in the ninth grade and then the senior year?
Yes, and what I've asked the counselors, and I, I keep saying this and saying it and saying it, that every time a student comes into you, you pull up that four-year plan. And the counselor said to me, "Every time now?" I said, "Yes, every time." We're going to remind them of what their plan is. Remember what you chose in eighth grade? Remember why you chose this? And the conversation when they're wanting to change, when they're wanting to drop class, why did we make this plan to start with?
Okay.
And how does dropping this help you reach your goal? But that's, this is the basis of what we work with, and it becomes a living document. It's not something we do in ninth grade and don't look at again until 12th grade, but it will be looked at continuously through the year, so that we're continually keeping it updated.
So, that students, when they're doing their course selection, they'd be part of an advisory role in this guidance counseling, you know, it'd be better for you to choose, you know, this, this math discipline versus that math discipline for these reasons.
Well, when you do that four-year plan, you're putting it in what, what you're going to take. So, when you're doing your schedule, if you're choosing different things, and then that doesn't meet the endorsement, we have to look at that and make that line up. We have to see that those kids are reaching their endorsement goals. So, every year, they can't just on their own randomly choose courses, it has to be in this pathway. And so, counselors will be charged to see that it does stay in that pathway, so that they get to be a senior, they have met that endorsement, because there's things they have to do at every grade level to be able to meet the endorsement.
And, and if a student changes their mind on their endorsements, that, that would be accommodated as well.
They can change their mind, but let's say if it's at the end of their junior year, then you're going to have to have that conversation with what endorsement could you reach if we do this now? And there has to be a written notice sent home to a parent every time something is changed, a written notice, and that's new, but it keeps the parent in, giving them that communication with what's happening at school.
Could you put up the slide on the formula?
Sure.
Please.
Your bet.
Thank you. When I'm looking at this formula, and I know, and I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that you came at this and looked at it as based on student need, but in our district, for example, students maybe that are first-generation high school students, we talk about first-generation college students, but you're a first-generation high school student, and you may have a higher percentage of those at one campus or another campus.
Right.
Are they in this formula to get more, more services?
That's a great question, Nell.
I don't know that we specifically identified that, but we did look at needs of students and what we need to, the services we need to provide for students for them to be college-ready. Because, you know, House Bill Five is all about college readiness, our strategic plan about our students being college-ready, career-ready, so all of those things need to be in place for every student. And then, through the Higher Education Advisory, Higher Academics Advisory Committee, we're looking at all the services that different groups come into our district, and we want to track the students that they serve through the Bound for Success, we want to track every student they're served. If a student is served in Bound for Success, then we know that they're getting that information, so all the students who are not, we have to systematically see that they are being served and given that information. So, we're going to have to have a system to identify students, how they're being served, and if they're not being served in this program or this program, then, then what do we do? So, all the students will be served.
There's a part two to that question, Ms. Solins, and that has to do with this. Our lead counselors, when we talk to them about our special populations, whether they're special education or limited English proficient or first generation, as you mentioned, our counselors stated that that's a common assumption, that we think that because we have a first-generation pop- population that's larger at a certain campus, most of our time would be spent there, but in reality, most of the time is spent here on responsive services, where it's immediate needs, and it's not only the students that are first generation, but students from all walks of life. Again, it's just immediate need that usually takes up most of their time.
Okay. And I ask so many questions, I'm going to hand the mic over to you because I have a feeling that my colleagues are going to have questions too, and I hate to pepper you with so many. It's just I'm very much been looking forward to this presentation, and I want to make sure and encourage that we would add as many FTEs as needed to get this program right. I think it pays off. I think it pays off for students, it pays off for student achievement, and I would agree, Mr. Hibbs, with you, my concern on this red part of this chart, and I understand, Mr. Garcia, that work has to get done somewhere.
Sure.
But maybe it's not appropriate where it is, and maybe it's not appropriate in another -- maybe we need some FTEs to handle that red part of the chart so that the guidance counseling stays guidance counseling.
That's also, if you, excuse me, there's also another thing that we learned from these pictures or snapshots, and that is the time management of the employee, kind of like when we teach in a classroom. When we start a classroom, we have to manage our time wisely so we can cover all the course objectives and be able to reach every single student. So it's the same thing in counseling, and these snapshots are giving us more things to question, such as, are we truly spending our time as counselors wisely, meaning are we trying to meet all these components, or are we honing in on the areas that we're stronger in? Maybe as a counselor, I'm better at individual planning, so I spend a lot of time there and a lot less in the other three components, and that's where the lead counselor and that's where Ms. Fielding comes in, to be able to make sure that, is there other things we can do to change these pies?
And I guess I would add to that, it's a great point, but what Ms. Pinya said earlier with a sense of urgency to get these positions filled with, and with how we need to get parts of that underway right away, that I would want to encourage from my perspective that if there's, we get this much done and we have not moved, the aftershock is not moved to the point where we think it's going to make tremendous change in student achievement. I'd like for you to come back and let's look at that again because I think this is foundational, and I think that it will make a big difference in terms of student achievement in the district.
Oh, you bet. We're happy to at least have this baseline, and we would love to come back to you a year or two from now and show you a whole different picture that's much more conducive to where we should be. A couple of things real quick. One is, with help from Scott, I'm sure we'll be able to touch in some of our universities, such as University of North Texas and Texas A&amp;M Commerce, which have the better counseling programs in the state. I'm sure, you know, we discussed that very briefly in other fields, but we can certainly do that in counseling as well. The other thing is, don't let these pie charts scare you. The bottom has not fallen out. Our counselors are still doing exceptional work. I know you know that, and that's very evident as you hear families, parents talk to us. I know we were at, Ms. Smith and I were at the graduation practices this Sunday, and we had countless parents coming to talk to us and how great counseling and our administrators are. So don't let these pictures scare you. We want to be perfect, and we want to be premier, but nevertheless, we've got an exceptional counseling and guidance program.
Perfect. Ms. Mays?
Okay, a lot of things that I were going to ask, I think, have kind of been touched on, so I won't belabor other points, but what I was going to point out, and you just touched it, was it looks like looking at these pie charts, it showed some other things that we weren't looking for. So since I feel very confident that we're going to handle the piece, I'm making sure that the number of counselors we need is as accurate as possible. I still want to know that we also address the other things that the pie chart is showing. And I agree. When I talk to counselors, I think we've got great counselors, they love what they're doing, but they want to do more of what they know they're supposed to be doing. So that's a good thing. So that 45% of the red box, I had the same thought, that if we get X number of counselors based on the formula, does it change that portion? And I really want to make sure that we find that out. Also, of that 45%, I'd kind of like to know what makes up that time that's not considered standard by the state. Is it something that still needs to be taken care of? And like you said, we don't want to push it down, but if it's a true need, then maybe we need to think of something to do to take care of that need because 45% is a pretty large number. Not only that, I'd also be interested in seeing how each campus looked. Out of that 45% is 35% of it only at one campus that we need to address. So I'd be real interested to see what kind of makes up that 45%?
Sure.
To see, is that a description of a position we need to either create or move to a position that's already there? In addition to that, the time management, I guess my one question I will ask is for part of your formula, when you were calculating the minutes per student, is that just a total aggregate of the minutes? Or do we know if those minutes would also encompass them to meet what the state standard says you need to do a percent of this portion and this portion? Would you be allowed to do that within the time limit?
Sure. And I don't want to take a whole lot more time, Cindy, I'm sorry, but we're digging a little bit deeper here. So let me just show you the formula super fast, okay? What we did was, we did the campus enrollment. There's a lot of things on here, but I'm just going to go to the big boxes. We went to the campus enrollment, then the minutes per student to meet the primary goal. The primary goal was the PGP because, of course, that's related to HB5. Next is the total minutes per campus enrollment. In other words, we multiplied the number of the primary goal minutes times enrollment, and that's the number of minutes that we received here in this box, and then the number of minutes that it takes to complete the other three components beyond individual planning, all other. And then this box indicates the required total minutes for the entire four components, and we're talking about individual counselors. And then this is how many hours a counselor works per week. We translated that into minutes, and then I won't go into great detail for every box, but just for example, if a campus right now currently has, let's say, eight counselors, and they have a student enrollment of, let's say, 32, 32, then using the formula, again, based on minutes, trying to make it contact hours with the student, you would see the addition of possibly three counselors. So now you would move from eight to 11, and that would put us at about a 292 student to one counselor ratio. And I'm going to shut that down because we're going to --
[laughing]
Because you're going to have a million questions, I know. So again, it's all minutes, and it's all minutes related to the four components.
Ms. Mays, anything else? Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Let me stay with the minutes then. Counselors work a 230, 231 day?
212 for high school.
Okay, and kids work 180 days, give or take a few?
Correct.
So it's around...
177. Correction.
Whole bunch. So there's a whole lot of days there when there's no kids around?
Correct.
Okay, did you adjust the minutes you needed because of the fact that there's no kids there, so they have to do something else those days?
We sure did. And let me see if I can get to...
Oh, I don't need to see the math. I just, that was a yes or no.
Because before school, those days before the kids are actually enrolled, we're doing schedule card pickup, we're doing schedule, we are doing schedule changes, schedule card pickup, we're enrolling new students. So we are, counselors are seeing students three weeks before school begins. The week after school, we are cleaning up graduation issues, we're having kids come in and make up tests that they, final exams that they missed. We are enrolling for summer school. So we're still seeing students all that time, even though they're not in a classroom.
On the pie chart, is that red or is that not red?
That would not be red because those are...
Non-guidance duties.
Those are things that counselors would do.
Okay.
Yes.
And they would actually fall under system support as they're supporting the academic system, or it would be non-guidance. Real quick, this is the chart that, or a graph, spreadsheet that shows homework, meaning a counselor taking things home, the amount of minutes that they spend, they didn't complete a packet for some reason, maybe a recommendation for a student that's wanting to apply for a four-year institution, things of that nature.
Okay. Next one. Assuming that we approve this, and I imagine we will, do you see us revisiting then the guidance tech and test facilitator numbers to attack the red area on the pie chart?
I don't know that we necessarily revisit the numbers. More, I think, initially would be about their function now. Are they being utilized, basically?
Okay. I think that would be the goal, is to attack the red part.
Right, by how they're being utilized now.
Thank you. Now, can we move into the rest, Mr. Hogg? Can we move into the rest of the FFC recommendations?
Not just yet. One more.
I'm done with that one, then.
Okay. Dr. Rush?
Thank you, President Hogg. Mr. Garcia, thank you very much for really getting into this. The level of thought and assessment, I appreciate greatly. We haven't had such a detailed look at our counselors, a data-driven process of what they do, and it's very helpful in going forward, trying to improve and give them the abilities, the resources to do what they do want to do. I echo completely everything that I've heard with my colleagues. I have several questions. I'll throw out the, an easy one first. The FFC recommendation was a compromise where they put needs based in there because they knew that's what the district really wanted to do, what you and staff wanted to do. But they still had a minimum, I believe, a minimum target kind of ratio. Do you know if that target was met? Did you determine that valid or invalid in the data process?
I ran that today even with these additional counselors. Using projected enrollment at the high school level, the student counselor ratio is 297 to 1. At the junior high level, it's 290 to 1. And so the ratio that they were looking for was 300 to 1. So we're right there.
Okay, well, that's great. Okay. Thank you very much. Regarding the comments started by Mr. Hibbs on moving the needle, what I'm interested in seeing, with our strategic plan, we have goals. We have measures, metrics on those goals that have targets and goals within them. We have district and campus scorecards that have targets and goals. I think it would be helpful to have that same type of process here to, for you to give us as accurate as possible the goal, the target numbers. How are we going to move this needle? Rather than a very good formula-based system, I don't know, we all have the concern, is it going to move the needle enough? So I'd like to see what the idea is. How far are we thinking this is really going to go? That'll only help us propel forward if we do it objectively that way. And I know that's not easy, but I don't think any of our targets and metrics have been. It's taken some time. One of the things that pops out to me, nobody's really said it clearly, but I think we all feel we still need more. In an ideal world with unlimited funding, we would be doing a whole lot more. Our strategic plan is very bold. All the things that we've done in recent time has been very, very bold and transformational. That's the goal. I would, I'm in support of what you've got here. I'd like to see more. For me personally, I don't know that it is truly transformational, that it's truly bold enough, and I don't know what we can sustain budgetarily, but what I'm, where I'm going with this is not just counselors, and we've talked, mentioned, looking at different allocations of different FTEs and resources. If there's a way to create a real bold, new look at what we do, I'm so appreciative that we've got the compliance recommendations from the state, and we're trying to move a needle to get to that compliance. Our strategic plan and everything about us is way beyond compliance. And with way beyond compliance comes with thinking, not just outside the box, I think you're doing that, but creating new boxes. And that's one thing that we've consistently said. And I don't know, I know we have a sense of urgency, we've got to get things posted, we've got to get people out there, but through automation, I think there's a lot of the red category that could disappear pretty easily. Maybe through reassigning of duties, if there's a certain number of credit recovery-type kids, the people, maybe there's a group of people that can do that, maybe a counselor can handle that across multiple platforms, multiple campuses, perhaps. I don't know, that's just an idea. So I put that challenge out there, and I don't want to wait an entire year or two. I do think we have great counselors. We have amazing staff, and they do want to do more, and they are strapped with things. And our curriculum audit, that was something that did come up internally and externally as far as parents, that they want to see more guidance. And if we look at us in a competitive environment, whether it be charter or especially privates, that's one of the strengths that they tout, is that they've got their counselors really looking at, what are you doing? What kind of college? Here's the kind of colleges that meet. And I'd like to see us really move that so that we can be able to tout as a district, hey, we've got this, nobody thought about this, and we've created this. So I don't know, I think that's something that we definitely need to look at. I think what you've got is a good start, and I'll just say it that way, and I think it's absolutely necessary. I think we've got to do more. I do have a question. As far as the data and the minutes assessment, was that done specifically, like as a study over a period of time, people checkmarked, I'm doing this, this, and this, or was it more of a think tank of, oh, I think I spent about this much time?
No, we made sure we didn't do that.
Okay, good.
We wanted to make sure we were specific with data.
Good.
So we would, like I said earlier, we charged them to go back to their campuses and speak with their colleagues, and then take a look at their logs, how many students they visited per week, per semester, per academic year.
Yeah.
And then how many special ed packets did you do? How many minutes did you take to complete?
Right, right.
So we were very specific.
Okay.
Because we, yes, we wanted to be super specific, especially to come up with a formula that we would adopt district-wide, and then our goal was also to not create a formula that a year or two from now would not work for us anymore.
Right.
We wanted to align it with the statement, say, yeah, two years from now, it's still working.
Yeah, yeah, and it's great. Anything that can be done with automation, Mr. Adam, would obviously help a lot. The, let's see, I guess the last thing that I have is, Nell commented how that there's a requirement on written notification, parental notification, if there's any changes made. I think another strength for our district would be that continued parent engagement. And if there's a way through, I don't want to have a manual process that's very labor-intensive, but something where those parents are contacted to let them know, hey, I talked to Johnny today, just, you know, a quick, whether it's an email or what, just a quick send-off, I spoke to him, we discussed XYZ, he might want to touch base with him. And that way, our parents will feel more plugged in, and maybe that'll help us have opportunities to engage those parents more and reach out to those that aren't that engaged. So I think this is, this is very good. I don't think adding two counselors at one particular high school is going to meet the need whatsoever. I think they're very overworked and under-resourced now, and they're going to be just about the same overworked and under-resourced because of all the HB5 requirements. So I don't know that we're really mitigating a whole lot. I applaud the efforts. I applaud the efforts, and I really, I, I don't know if there's a way we can do it during this budget cycle to try to get some more added, and I know you guys are busy, but those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good.
Mr. Hibbs.
Okay, so I want to direct this to the board. We've got a situation here that, that obviously we know that there, there needs to be a increase in our counselors. I'm thinking what the administration has brought us back is a thought-out plan to say, here's how we address the issues that we have. I, I think that they're doing it in, in a way that they're showing us budgetary constraints. Maybe what the FFC was, had discussed in their meetings. Not necessarily what we might need as our end goal to get us to the, to where we want to meet the needs that's laid out in our strategic plan. I'm afraid that we just go on, and I'm with you, Mr. Barron, I would love to be able to move on to the other components of this, of the FFC. But I, I don't want to do it at the risk of saying that we, we approve what, what's being recommended right now, and we miss the mark. Is there a? I would either want to vote in favor of this and say with the caveat, I want to make sure that if we need more testing coordinators to move the non-guidance aspects away from these campuses, that they, that they come back, that the administration comes back to, to us with those recommendations. Or have here an approval there that we just say, we're going to approve these positions, but before the final budgetary process is put into place at the end of this month, that if these numbers are not adequate to address the concerns that the board brought up tonight, that you come back to us and we, we take one more look at this. I just want to make sure that we're not going to go into the next school year and be short on counselors. I would welcome anybody else's thoughts on that.
Let's go with Ms. Pena, and then we can maybe take some thoughts. Ms. Pena?
Actually, I was going to go in the same direction you just addressed, Mr. Hibbs. And I think the best way to address this is to go ahead and approve what they recommended at this point, because then tomorrow they can start recruiting. And then that we ask them to do a revisit this to make sure that we are adequately providing counselors. I'm, I think all, the message is clear, that the board wants to make sure that we have adequate number of counselors, and that they're doing the job they're hired to do. So I, I think we're all in with what you've just said. But I, I don't want to stop this process, because like I said, my, one of my biggest concerns is the recruitment factor in getting the counselors we need. So we start here with the caveat of revisit and come back with some other numbers to address our concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Pena, and Mr. Hibbs, I agree. I think we need to approve the 18. I would tell you, I have, I would like to see that 45% completely eliminated also. I also realize, I don't think that can be eliminated overnight, because it's some training, it's some repurposing. I'm also, I will tell you, I'm very hesitant to say, hey, staff, you made these recommendations, but we think there needs to be more FTEs. Anytime we're adding more FTEs, I'm going to have some budgetary. As Dr. Rice said, if an unlimited budget, well, we don't have that. We have the other pieces. What are the other pieces we're trying to achieve in the plan? So my leaning would be, let's approve this 18, let's have that recommendation. I would even say that comes back as a budget amendment after, if there's other recommendations that come, possibly in August. And, and maybe we review it into June, August, somewhere around there. Because counselors can be hired at the start of the school year, and, and I agree, Ms. Pena, we've got to be cautious over that. But here, Mr. Kell, I'm feeling more confident in our recruiting of what we're going to do. And I think we see what happens with what we're doing. Does that needle move enough? I don't think we're going to move it the whole way, but I think we can make a big adjustment. And it gives us some of that maybe leeway to make some other adjustments into our budget of where we're trying to go, instead of just throwing more FTEs at the situation and the problem.
It would never be my intent to throw any.
I, I understand, and I apologize. I didn't mean to say it that way.
And I know, and I'm not taking it that way, but I just, I just want to make sure that we're not going just on the FFC's recommendation with, which is what these, these were. I mean, and, you know, I just want to make sure that if we're, that the recommendations that are being made are not solely based on minutes, but we find out that minutes doesn't work in, you know, at a certain campus. Because a kid could be missing. Does that kid miss his minutes? I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm being facetious with that, but it's, it's, you know, at the end of the day, let's get it right.
No, I think we all agree. Dr. Rush?
I, I do agree. I, I think what maybe we're articulating or trying to articulate is come back, let's do this, let's get this moving, but then come back and, and look at a, a comprehensive recreation, transformation of what counseling can be in a district, given our certain parameters. Much like with our bond program, Dr. Cavassos has been very good about empowering staff to not just move bodies from one building to another. This is an opportunity to create, come up with something new, develop new programs that really meet the needs. And I look at this as that, that same opportunity. Let's look at it as an opportunity to create something new, not just, let's, let's grow, let, yeah, because none of us want to do that. We're very, very frugal. There's, there's, there's ways. So that, I think that's what we're trying to articulate. So we can move the budget process forward, and I do like your idea, President Hogg, with perhaps a budget amendment to something, because this, this is comprehensive, in my opinion, something that is going to take much more time than just trying to cram it through this month. It's not going to happen, so.
I agree. I would tell the board, let's wait till the end, let's get through the rest of FFC in this part of the motion to say move forward with those 18 positions.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
You bet.
Your leg's tired standing up there?
No.
So, Ms. Powell, come on, let's, 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 let's move. No, we're making it at the end. Mr. Barron, you got a question? Go ahead.
Ms. Powell, I just had one more question on the FFC recommendations. Excuse me. On the universal screener, what is the, the goal, the intended benefit of that?
I asked Mrs. Smith to, to speak to that. It is a, it's an assessment tool, it's software that allows teachers to assess where their students are. So right now, we have teachers who test one-on-one with a student to assess their math skills and their reading skills. And so the software would be a, a tool that would allow us to test students in a lab setting rather than a one-on-one setting, and reduce the amount of time ultimately that a teacher has to spend away from the rest of the class to do these one-on-one assessments, so.
I know at, at the beginning of the year, there are a number of tests that the teachers at the lower levels have to test their kids, one-on-one. Is this going to replace those? Or is it just another added burden on the teacher?
What we're, what we're going to do is study this very closely, this, beginning this fall, to have a recommendation. We're going to put together a group of stakeholders to really look at this very intensively, and look at data, and get expert advice on that. And what we're hoping on the, the universal screeners, as Ms. Powell just said, is a great quick snapshot that can test a student where they are, and we can monitor that progress along the way without it being a intensive sit-down, long amount of time. It's, it's a way to progress monitor where those students are and what kind of progress they're making.
But will it replace, at some point, the one-on-one testing that teachers have to do?
We are looking at our entire program so that we can, yes, look at how we can be most efficient and most, both time-wise and the information that we're receiving, we're receiving for those students. We're going to be looking at that comprehensive plan.
Okay. That's it?
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Ms. Pena?
On item 16, uniformed police officers eat for free, and you said you're doing further study on that?
Yes.
What further study are you doing?
We've, we've talked with, we are talking with the police department to get their input on their thoughts of having officers in our schools for something like this.
And this would be any officer, not just this, are all?
Any, any uniformed police officer.
And this is to get them to come in and mingle with our students so they feel more comfortable around the police officers?
Have a presence there, yes. And then we also want to take input from our principals on this as well.
Okay. As, if they're providing a service such as that, then I'm not as concerned, because I was concerned that we were doing gift of public funds. But if they are providing a service where they're actually doing something, and our intent is fulfilled, then I don't have a problem with that.
And Ms. Pena, I think there's definitely some further study. I know APD, I think they have a policy that officers aren't allowed to accept free lunches from businesses or anything of that nature, especially while they're on duty. So I think there's definitely some, some further study, and no matter what, I think they would be doing work while they're in the school, whether it's community building, things of that nature.
Related to something, they are really providing a service, and so it's not free.
Oh, without a doubt. I, I don't, I don't think it would be considered at all a gift of public fund, but I, I do think there's further study, because I think APD is going to have some opinions over that. And, and I, as a citizen, want more of them in there, but also have a concern, when they're eating lunch, are they not patrolling streets and things of that nature? We've got to make sure we have the right staffing in our schools, but.
They have to eat sometime.
I agree. Mr. Hibbs?
We'll be able to have a little bit more discussion after this if, if, if we so choose. But I'd like to make a motion that we accept the FFC recommendations that the administration has brought forward at this point.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Ms. Solins. Discussion. Mr. Hibbs, just a point of clarification, that is just on items that are listed under action and not study further, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Any other further discussion? Dr. Rush? Yeah, please.
Okay, I've got some questions. Just clarifications, excuse me. On the, the recommendation from FFC, number one, it's on that first slide of recommendations, the funding for student academic competitions. You have, that's in the strategic plan budget, so is, that's already budgeted, that $100,000 is already earmarked?
That actually is there.
It's a formality more than anything there. Okay, just double checking that one. Let's see. And the stipends that we're talking about on the lead GT teacher coordinator at each elementary school, what, what was that amount again?
The $53,000, $40,000, it would be a $1,000 stipend for each of the elementary schools. So 52 elementaries.
Okay.
Times 1,000, 52,000. The remainder then is the Medicare, which is 1.45%, and the TRS care, which is .055.
And what is the expected outcome by doing this?
I'm going to ask Mrs. Smith to address that.
Is to really have somebody on each campus who's championing those programs and those after-school programs that we're getting our students involved in, whether that be Destination Imagination, UIL Academics, what other opportunities that we have to serve that population of students.
So is there going to be a, a baseline of what is currently happening at each of those schools, and then a targeted outcome measure?
Absolutely, we'll be measuring those, and I think information now Mrs. Porter is putting together for the success that we've had this year.
Okay, okay, great. And, let's see here. That might be everything. Oh yeah, the, the last one that I have is on the funding for the SAT online course. I know during committee, the FFC committee, we, we had a little bit of discussion about this particular program versus another one that was related to SAT, and we were trying to look at potentially maximizing with PSAT and exploring if there was other options related to ACT. Can, can you address that a little bit, Evan, and, and make us feel comfortable that this is the right direction to go?
Well, with the PSAT being in alignment with what we do with Ready Step and those other tests, and we felt like this was the right way to go. In this, we've looked at several different options. This becomes very cost-effective with the more students that we have that, that partake of this, of this course online. So we, we feel that with the number of students that we have that are taking the SAT and that are college-bound throughout the years, that this would be a, a great opportunity for those students to either take the course and get so, you know, spend as much time as possible on it, or to go ahead and complete this, because it offers a lot of practice tests and assessment questions and tutorials for those students. And this can be done at their own pace, wherever they have access to it.
And is there, is there something like that out there for ACT as well? I only ask that because in my personal experience with my child, it, it seems that the ACT appears to be an easier test, and it's accepted at the same level at the university. And I know they, they, they're, they're, they're different, but I just was curious about that, because I know there's some, some schools that focus, or districts that really focus more on ACT for that reason. And are we missing a mark there, or what do you think?
I'd have to get back with you on, on that. As far as talking about it from the college perspective, I think that Mr. Garcia might be able to expand a little bit on the ACT versus the SAT at the college level.
Okay.
Super fast, you're absolutely right. There are some figures that state nationally, students are more successful on the ACT than on the SAT, specifically students of color. So something for us to really consider, considering our student demographics.
Yeah.
In regard to the ACT online, there is a practice ACT online, and a lot of it is delivered through Princeton Review, as you've probably heard in the past. But to answer your question, yes, ACT has been proven. There are some figures out there that indicate that students of color tend to do better, for some reason, than on the SAT.
So it might, but might be something to continue to explore. Okay. Well, very good. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Ms. Solins. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, all trustees vote in the affirmative. We'll move on. Oh, thank you, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is items to be withdrawn from consent agenda. Do we have any items to be withdrawn this evening? We, seeing none, we'll, oh, sorry. We'll move on to Ms. Powell, donations bear, missed out. Ms. Powell, can't even talk right now. Ms. Powell, please present the consent agenda.
Thank you. President Hogg, board members, Dr. Cavassos, we have four bids on the agenda this evening. And in all cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district. On our donations, the donations presented this evening total $89,077. And that brings our year-to-date total to $1,107,397. This would typically be the last report of our fiscal year. So just by comparison, this year's total is a little over $1,000,001, compared to just over $1,000,000 last year. So we're about, almost $100,000 higher this year on donations than last year.
Good. We need to, with these positions we're adding, Ms. Powell, we need donations. Is there a motion, sorry, is there a motion to accept?
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. We have a motion by Ms. Pena and a second by Dr. Rice. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven trustees, present seven trustees, voting in the affirmative. No, not yet. Next, we'll move on to discussion item, preliminary 2014 budget. This is, we've already started budget, budget discussion, but now getting into the nitty-gritty to kind of go over overview of numbers. Remember, we have a whole month, many meetings to discuss this. Ms. Powell, or Dr. Cavassos?
Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you again, Dr. Cavassos, board members, and President Hogg. This is a first glimpse at our preliminary budget for the 14-15 fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from July one through June thirtieth. Law requires that we adopt our budget by June thirtieth for the upcoming year. This is very much a work in progress. We will have a meeting each week this month, and we'll continue to kind of get closer and closer to a final proposed budget that the board will consider on June twenty-sixth. Between now and the end of June, we know there are several things that we'll be bringing back to you. For example, the remainder of those FFC recommendations that we said we would study further. Also, possibly, we'll have a conversation about compensation. And then likewise, any possible adjustments that we identify to our estimates between now and then. So it is very much a, a work in progress. I wanted to start by giving an overview of how this process will progress over the next few weeks. Tonight, we, obviously, we've already heard FFC recommendations, and you all have given us direction on some of those that we can go ahead and, and plan to add to the budget. Next, we're going to discuss the preliminary budget for the general fund, just the general fund. We have several other budgets that the board adopts a budget for as part of the, the, the original budget each year. We'll bring those next week. And so this, this will allow us to focus on the general fund this evening. At our meeting on June the twelfth, we will again discuss FFC recommendation. We'll bring all the remaining funds, and we will also discuss staffing needs. Senior staff is still assessing staffing needs, and we'll bring that information to you for consideration. We'll begin a conversation on, on what compensation adjustment might cost the district. And then we will also, the board will vote on the proposed tax rate. And I need to be very clear that the board will not adopt the tax rate until August, after we get certified values. But we're required to publish a notice in the paper about a hearing before the board adopts the budget. And, and the hearing is for the, the proposed budget and tax rate. So we need a vote on the proposed tax rate so we can publish that notice in the paper. We'll actually have that hearing on June twenty-sixth. Then on June seventeenth, which is a Tuesday, we'll have a meeting, again, continuing conversation on FFC recommendations as needed and conversations on the proposed budgets, including the staffing needs and compensation. Ultimately, we'll come on the twenty-sixth, have the public hearing for the proposed budget and tax rate. And then the board would identify any final adjustments, if any, to the budget. And then we have to adopt the budget by June thirtieth. The desire would be that we adopted that night of the twenty-sixth. We'll receive our certified property values from TAD on July twenty-fifth and then adopt the tax rate in August. So with that, we thought that it would be a good idea to start with an overview of where we actually are this year before we delve into next year. So just a very brief, high-level overview. We actually adopted a budget that had a twelve and a half million dollar surplus in it for the thirteen fourteen year. And where we are today, we are projecting that we will actually end the year with a fifteen point eight million dollar surplus. So we're doing a little bit better than we originally projected. So at the moment, we're estimating that our fund balance will actually end this year at a hundred and seventy-two point one million dollars. Now, key piece of our revenue budget always is property values. We've received the May fifteenth preliminary values from the Tarrant Appraisal District, and they were a little better than we had previously been estimating. We have, as we've worked through tax rate impacts on the, for the bond package, we were assuming a two percent increase in our property values. With these May values, they're preliminary, and we know that people appeal their values. And so between now and July twenty-fifth, those values will actually decline a bit as people appeal their property values. We have a long history of what that looks like and what, how those values change between May fifteenth and July twenty-fifth. So when we apply an average change factor there, we project that our values on July twenty-fifth will actually be about three point seven percent higher than they were last year on July twenty-fifth. And again, we have been planning on two percent, so, so that was good news for us. Terms of the estimated tax rate, we are projecting that the tax rate for this upcoming year would be a dollar thirty-five eighty-four. The, there are two parts to our tax rate. There's the M and O piece that funds the operations of the district and the general fund. There's also the debt service portion of the tax rate that pays for bonded debt payments that are due in the upcoming year. We are recommending that the M and O rate is, remains the same at a dollar four. According to current state law, we cannot exceed a dollar four without having a tax ratification election. So we're at that max point right now. On the debt service side, we are anticipating that that rate would need to increase by six point six cents per one hundred dollar valuation. This reflects the implementation of, of our bond program, the bonds that we're going to sell on June twenty-sixth. We'll have payments on those in this upcoming year. And so our financial advisors for Southwest have helped us model what that will cost us, and we believe that that will cost about six point six cents. Now, I will also point out that not only is it the, the additional principal and interest that will be due in this upcoming year, we also will be receiving less state facility funding, because the state funding we get for facilities is a guaranteed yield. As our property values go up, we get less of that state facilities money, and so we're seeing some of that as well. And again, we will actually adopt that rate in August. So to, to share an idea of what a six point six cent increase will cost, the owner of a one hundred thousand dollar home, that individual would pay another fifty-six dollars and thirty cents a year in property taxes, more than they did in the thirteen fourteen year. That works out to be four dollars and sixty-nine cents a month. And again, we'll actually adopt the rates in August. Moving on now to the general fund budget. Provide an overview here of where we stand today, and I'll make a couple of points here. One being that what you see here does not include those FFC recommendations that the board just approved. We will add those in. You'll see them as part of, of these schedules next week. So where we sit today, as the budget stands, we actually are looking at an operating surplus of fourteen million dollars. You see that middle column that has, it's actually a kind of an orange shading, it's kind of hard to see on the wall, but a surplus of fourteen million dollars. That's an operating surplus. And you see how that compares to the original budget for the thirteen fourteen year with a twelve and a half million dollar budget. Now, one thing I, I want to remind everyone is that we have approved using some surplus fund balance to build a new elementary school. And so that comes out of the general fund, and under accounting rules for governmental accounting, when you acquire an asset or you build an asset, you expense the entire cost of that in the year that you buy it or build it. Not like for-profit accounting, where you actually show it as an asset on the balance sheet and then you just depreciate it. So it's a little different. So when we add that into the mix, we actually have to show the expenditure to construct that elementary school. And that's twenty-one point eight million dollars that we plan to spend this year on that elementary school. And so that would bring us to a net expense or a bottom-line deficit of seven point eight million dollars. But again, that's only because we're taking twenty-one point eight million dollars out of fund balance for the construction of that elementary school. So if the budget were to be adopted as it sits here, and again, that doesn't include the FFC recommendations we've talked about, then the ending fund balance would be a hundred and sixty-four point three million dollars. So I've got several slides that have some highlights about how the budget's created at this point, what's in there that, that is new and of interest. First of all, we, you know, we obviously, we build the budget based on current funding law and our estimated property values. We also, we have to estimate what our enrollment will be. That drives a lot of information, primarily staffing. So we are projecting that our enrollment will be rather flat in this upcoming year, a very minor increase over this current year. Each student is a point of interest. Each student generates a little over fifty-eight hundred dollars. This is each student in average daily attendance, which is different than, than enrollment. And that number will go up just a little bit this year, because the state legislature, when they last met, they increased the basic allotment for the thirteen fourteen year. They factored in another small increase for the fourteen fifteen year. So it will, the actual basic allotment increases by one point eight percent for this upcoming year. There's funding in the budget for elementary school PLCs, and that money right now resides in substitutes. The idea is that we will allocate these funds on a formula basis to the elementary schools and give them some flexibility to decide how to best implement the PLCs on their campus, whether it's bringing subs in, whether it's something after school, or some combination thereof. But we'll give them the flexibility to decide how best to do that. So I believe that this will provide for six three-hour PLCs across the year for all the elementary schools. There's also funding in here for substitutes incentive program. This was something that we spoke with the board about earlier this year to help us reduce the number of, of open positions or positions that go unfilled with substitutes. So we've implemented a plan to pay an additional ten dollars a day for substitutes on Fridays, an additional ten dollars a day, any day of the week, for someone who subs at a school that has been historically hard to fill. And so we're continuing that for next year. That adds three hundred thousand dollars to our budget. In terms of salaries, the staffing levels and the campus allotments are, are based on projected enrollments and on staffing ratios that the board approved actually in December. The preliminary budget right now has a million dollars in it to cover surplus teachers who have yet to be placed in other positions. We have some teaching positions that have been surplus. And as we surplus positions, we place those individuals in other vacant teaching positions. We have nineteen right now that have been surplus that have yet to be placed. And so we include a million dollars in the budget to cover those positions in the event that they're not placed in a vacant position, because we, those individuals have contracts, we will carry them in the upcoming year back on their home campus. So if we have opportunity between now and the end of June, if we're able to place these people, we'll be able to reduce that, that amount that's in the budget. We've included in here the impact of the mid-year salary adjustments. Annualized, that's roughly three million dollars. So that, that is factored into this budget. And there is no increase in here, no salary increase at this point. And looking at our positions at the campus level, you know, the board approved the staffing formulas in December. The HR department has gone through staffing process with the principals based on projected enrollments. We actually have a reduction in the number of campus staffing units for this year totaling fifty-eight. Majority of those are at the elementary teacher level. As I mentioned, our staffing, our, our enrollment is projected to be flat. At the beginning of this past year, we, any year, we, we staff based on projected enrollments. So our projected enrollment at the start of the thirteen fourteen year wasn't quite what we had projected, so we had some open positions that we never filled. And likewise, as we've staffed very carefully with our formulas this year, and we've had a flat projected enrollment, then it's produced fifty-eight total fewer positions across all of our campuses. So these are not people that are, are being let go. This is a, a change that will be, that will take place through attrition. And I go back to that statement that we're carrying a million dollars in the budget right now for nineteen surplus teaching positions. And so those individuals, if they're not placed, they will remain in service on their, their current campus.
And Cindy, just for clarification, the, not only through attrition, these were not filled?
Right. And that's what I said, these were positions that because our enrollment wasn't quite what we expected, we didn't need the positions. And so many of these were open to begin with.
That's correct.
And I think there were roughly forty that were opened last year that we never filled.
Just for clarification, for nineteen positions, we've got a one point oh two two potential budget impact. But for fifty-eight positions, we only have two point six?
There's some add in there. You see that early college high school is add, and we are adding several teachers at the secondary level. And there are thirteen of those that are actually TAs. And so that's a salary, an average salary of fifteen thousand, seventeen thousand dollars, so...
Right. Yeah, I, I guess looking at the elementary teachers, fifty-three at, at two point eight versus nineteen at, at one. Now, okay, I guess that's right. It's, it's late, I'm tired. Okay, thanks.
Oh, don't say that. Please, don't say... All right.
Always is the key word.
We have a new item in the budget that is difficult. The legislature, when they last met, they mandated that all school districts start to contribute one point five percent of eligible salaries and wages to TRS. That is estimated to cost roughly four million dollars for us. Now, they also, for one year only, for the fourteen fifteen year only, the state appropriated money to basically offset that cost. So we actually have to make the contribution to TRS, TR, or the state is going to give us the money to cover that through the state funding formula. That's one time only. Future years, that goes away. Now, when we've done our budget forecast, our multi-year forecast, we've factored that in for future years.
And Ms. Powell, real quick on that and on the counselor requirement from HB five, the increase, to meet those standards, we have those listed in our legislative, underfunded, because I know that's critical. Just, just making sure. Thank you.
Yes.
That's what they're saying.
This is a new unfunded mandate.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
A big one. Junior high athletics expansion, this is a, it's small in terms of dollars, but I wanted to point out that following, you know, the last board meeting where we talked about adding wrestling at the junior highs, Mr. Hill made that presentation, and so we've added that cost into the budget. We've also added in three hundred fifty thousand dollars for contracted mowing. We had contracted mowing service that served the elementary schools. We had to reduce that in the eleven twelve year when state cut our funding. And we, we've struggled to, and have not been able to maintain our elementary grounds in the manner that, that we expect and that I think our community expects. So we're putting that back in. This also helps us, we never, we did not add staff to do that work in the eleven twelve year. So what that did is it took away from other duties that the grounds guys performed in, whether it's trimming bushes or trimming trees or other grounds-related work that we have not been able to maintain nearly as well while they're trying to mow on a not very frequent schedule. So we've added that in. We also recognize in here, there, there was funding in the thirteen fourteen year for a, a low-interest loan from the state that will allow us to do energy retrofit projects. It was almost five million dollars total. And the way that works, it's almost like a grant. As you spend the money, then you, you draw down the funds from that loan. And the loan actually, with the governmental accounting procedure, shows up as a resource, like a, like a revenue. So we've done those projects now. We have more to do. So there's a net reduction in the contracted maintenance and repair line items, because we've done some of those projects last year. And so that's why that's down seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. But we do have money in the budget this upcoming year for, to complete those projects. A one point six million dollar overall reduction in utility costs. This is where we're seeing the benefit of our upgraded equipment that we've been getting through the two thousand nine bond program and the contract pricing that we have in place, and then additional energy conservation efforts. There's a learning management system from the technology area that is both for professional development and online instruction. The learning management system will help us manage those online offerings, and that's both, again, for professional development and online learning. We're also purchasing fifteen online courses, and those are student courses. Those are not adult professional learning courses. Total three hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. And then also software, the special ed department for managing their, their IAPs and ARDs. And then also there's reading material, there's a... There's a large part of that special ed addition is for adaptive reading materials for our special ed classrooms.
Ask a quick question on that LMS. Is that Blackboard? I just was curious what the product was.
Short answer is, we are actually going to be evaluating those products starting next week.
Oh, okay. So they don't have a specific one yet?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, and we also have Microsoft Enterprise license for our Microsoft Office products. This we will actually purchase based on the staff FTE count that we have across the district, but then we can use it for staff and students. For, and this will help us standardize our operating systems across all of our devices and also ensure that we're all operating on one Office product instead of multiple versions of it. It will also give us at-home rights for staff and students. And then on the TIF payments, you know, we actually have a line item that shows up under revenue and under expense for TIF. The TIF is an economic development zone that we participate in. We're in two, one is downtown Arlington area, the other is along I-20 in Grand Prairie, just east of Highway three sixty. In the twenty thirteen-fourteen original values, the TIF values in that Grand Prairie TIF actually grew dramatically beyond what we had provided for in that original budget. We amended the budget to reflect that. So the way the TIF works, you collect taxes on the properties in the TIF, and then you remit those taxes into the TIF, and they use those funds to, for further infrastructure development to generate more economic development in the zone. And eventually, when the TIF ends, that higher value comes back onto your tax roll. And so it's an incentive for governmental entities to participate in it. So we had a big increase, and that increase really occurred last year. It was because the mall, the new outlet mall that came on, and so we amended the budget during the year. But when we compare budgets each year, we're looking at our proposed, our preliminary budget for the upcoming year compared back to the original budget we adopted last year, and that original budget did not have that higher value in it. So that is just about a wash on the bottom line, but we have to recognize it both revenue and expense. There's funding in here for the year three activities for the strategic plan. Those items total two point eight million dollars. I've listed here the items included, the highlight items. There's instructional model training. Again, this is where we talked about the extracurricular and co-curricular activities for students, adding the hundred thousand dollars for that. Developing the data warehouse, the board has approved already, and the dashboard integration from that. Expanding dual credit offerings. We also have in here developing educational specifications and sequence and schedule work to implement the facilities visions on our new construction projects. Continuing surveys and the related training that goes with that, including staff, parent, student, and community surveys, and the training that's based on the results of those surveys. Leadership development, and then continuing community engagement and communications activities. We have some capital needs. The big one is the construction of the new elementary school. We have actually committed, I believe it was twenty-three point six million dollars originally for this school. We spent a little bit in this year on design expenses, and then we had the bulk of that work will be budgeted and incurred in the fourteen-fifteen year. There will be one small piece that we think will carry over into fifteen-sixteen to close out the project. So twenty-one point seven million dollars for that. Beyond that, then, we have a little over four hundred thousand dollars of some miscellaneous equipment, some athletic equipment, replacing an elevator at Lamar High School, and replacing some maintenance equipment, and replacing some security carts. We have security carts on our high school campuses. We have four that are older and need to be replaced. So those total twenty-two million dollars, and that's in the budget. So bring us back to the slide again that we saw a few minutes ago. Given everything that we've talked about, if the budget were to be adopted as it stands right now, we would show that net expenditure of seven point eight million dollars, again, strictly because of the construction of the elementary school. Without the elementary school, we're actually sitting right now at fourteen million dollar surplus. And so we will add into that now, those expenditures, the expenses from the FFC discussion we had earlier. This is a history of our fund balance. You can see how it has fared. The blue line across the top of the bars, and the numbers there represent the number of months of operating expense that we have in our fund balance. And so you can see that we trend down here in our preliminary budget. Again, that's just because we've taken some surplus money out of fund balance to build that new elementary school. The credit rating agencies want to see that we have at least two months of operating expense in unassigned fund balance, and we very easily meet that. So again, I come back to the, kind of the first slide we started on, on our next steps. At next week's meeting, we'll bring back more of the FFC recommendations along with staffing needs from administration. We'll bring the budgets for the other funds, and that includes the natural gas fund, the debt service fund, the construction fund, and food service fund. We'll begin some limited conversation probably on compensation, and the board will vote on the proposed tax rate. And then you can see how it continues to progress on out until, we hope to adopt the budget on June twenty-sixth. So here's where we are. We talked about having that operating surplus right at fourteen million dollars. So if you look at the budget as it was just presented here, we're right at fourteen million dollar operating surplus. Again, that's exclusive of that fund balance expenditure. The FFC recommendations that you all now have directed us to add to the budget, we will do that, and that will bring the operating surplus to twelve point two million dollars the next time you see this. And then we have these other three areas, the additional FFC items, staffing needs, and compensation that will be, to be determined as we move through the next few weeks. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Good job, Ms. Powell. Ms. Pena.
You may have answered this, and it went by me because it's so late at night, but one line item that you had on there was to do a contract for mowers?
Yes.
But then on the grounds equipment, asking for two new mowers?
And that's, we have mowing equipment, and some of it is really aging, and we put a lot of additional wear on our existing equipment in the last few years since we eliminated that mowing contract. We had a mowing contract in the eleven-twelve year because of state funding cuts, we cut that out. We brought all the mowing back in-house. We didn't add any staff to do that. But our staff is mowing more, or mowing using that equipment more over the last several years, and we put a real toll on that equipment. The contracted mowing strictly covers mowing at the elementary schools. That's what it did before. We still have high schools, junior highs, that our grounds crews will maintain and athletic fields. And so we still need equipment to do that.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. I just have two. First one is on the increase in the debt service rate.
Yes.
Does that reflect the bond package that we just passed and starting to make payments on that during this first year?
Yes. And, you know, one of the items on the board's agenda tonight was directing staff to proceed with work to bring that first sale of bonds. We plan to bring a sale of a hundred and seventy-six million dollars on June twenty-sixth, and that will fund the contracts that we will let in this upcoming year from the bond package that was just approved. So that funds the work that will take place this upcoming year. By law, with your debt service tax rate, you can only levy a tax that is enough to pay your principal and interest that are due in that upcoming year. So that additional debt plus the reduction in the state facility assistance is what is driving that increase, that six cent increase.
Good. My other question is, if you can go to the one that has the preliminary budget, general fund budget summary that's got the orange column?
This one?
Sure. Either that one or the last one, doesn't matter. Even though we are as frugal as all get out, and we got a surplus of fourteen million, and we're paying for a school in cash, it's still going to show, no matter what, that we have a deficit budget, right?
Right. And that's something that's unique to governmental accounting. If we were in the for-profit world, and we went out and bought a piece of equipment, or if we built a building, you don't expense the whole cost for that. You put it on your balance sheet, whatever the value of the asset is, and then you just depreciate it over the life of that asset. With governmental accounting, the accounting, whole accounting effort is to look at the cash, the resources you have available, and how you spend that. And so under governmental accounting rules, we have to expense entirely the cost of any capital outlay we have. So to construct an elementary school, we're going to show an expenditure for the entire cost of that in one year, and we don't depreciate over in the general fund.
So there's no way we can sugarcoat it and not have a deficit?
No, no, we can't. We just have to keep explaining that it's...
Mr. Barron, finance doesn't know the word "sugarcoat" at all, so...
Well, that was a technical term. Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Sure.
Sugarcoat's not an encouraged word with finance departments, so... Dr. Raich.
Okay, I have a series of questions, probably a good half hour worth. Just kidding. On the debt service, that six point six cents, we decreased our rate by a penny over the past two years for two cents, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, I know we can't report it this way, but collectively, net, we're increasing four point six cents, just to put it out there for some interested people in the community.
Yes.
The question I have on the three point three million difference on our budget projection versus the original, is that mostly from increased revenue, you think? Or are there a lot of cost savings that you've been able to realize?
Actually, if you look at this, it's a mixture. And I'm sorry, that's, go back to the right slide. It's actually more that we have more savings on the expenditure side than we have more revenue. We actually, the revenue budget is actually, revenue's actually coming in less than we budgeted. We talked about our enrollment being very flat, and so our state aid reflects that from this year. On the flip side, though, we have less expenditures. Our enrollment was flat. We had some positions that were approved in the budget that we didn't need, we never filled. So there's some savings there. That's a big piece there. There's also utility savings in here, and then a couple of other things that play into the mix. So the bulk of that is actually on the expenditure side, that positive variance.
So those, yeah, those are not necessarily a creation of a new way of doing business in certain categories that would reflect a permanent going-forward change, that's just a matter of circumstance?
It is, and, you know, but as we build a new budget, you know, those circumstances, and I guess utilities is a good example, you know, we're budgeting less in utilities next year, partly because we've got this trend, this positive trend that we're seeing, partly because of better equipment that's more energy efficient, and partly because of pricing on our electricity supply contracts and our conservation efforts. So we're able to translate that into next year's budget.
Yeah. Yeah, at some point, highlighting those things for us to brag on what we're doing is really important to communicate out there to the public, because I think all too often, and with our next political season, session that's coming up, the likelihood is going to be the focus on, oh, bloat and growth and expansion, and the more that we can have in our artillery to show, well, actually, over long-term, we've actually saved this and projected out, it's this. And I think that's going to be very valuable. Thanks.
I just had one more. You reminded me of it. Is there any way we can quantify how energy efficient Adams Elementary is compared to a regular elementary school?
We absolutely can, and I can't quote a number today, but I can tell you that I know that even when we very first opened the school, that very first month, we were interested in looking at that, and I think it had the lowest cost per square foot and lowest consumption of any of our other elementary schools, and I don't know if the...
That trend is continuing.
It'd be really interesting to see just how energy efficient it is.
And we can get that.
Thank you.
The other comments from the trustees?
Perfect. Ms. Powell, thank you for one of many presentations.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to open forum for non-agenda items. I don't have any cards. Perfect, then we'll move on. Go on to superintendent to support Dr. Brassus.
Thank you, President Hogg, and like to share some information about our district. And TEA has recently recognized the AISD Special Education Department, you see a picture there, of outstanding leadership and promotion for innovative practices in the area of student self-determination. May the twentieth, students and staff highlighted their accomplishments, and during the luncheon, a panel of elementary, junior high, and high school students demonstrated their research-based self-determination skills that will ultimately assist them in developing independence. Students shared their strengths and challenges, as well as goals of life after graduation from high school. It was a very positive experience that they learned from AISD. On May the twentieth, I was able to take part in Take Twenty-Five program at Shored Elementary. Several members of the Arlington Police Department were there to spread the message for kids to take twenty-five minutes to talk to their parents about safety at home, especially during the summer months. We've had several end-of-the-year banquets that we enjoy celebrating, teachers, students, and staff, and volunteers. On May twenty-second, more than two hundred volunteers were honored at the PDC, and I want to thank them again for their service to our schools and our students. Every campus was represented, some couldn't attend, but every campus had volunteers to be recognized, and it was very, very positive. Want to thank Aaron Peralas for his efforts on that recognition. Employees celebrated twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and forty years of experience in Arlington recently, and we had that celebration as well. We had a wonderful student-teacher achievement recognition, or STAR luncheon, where we recognized the top two percent in each graduating class and their most influential teacher. And the students have a bright future ahead, and it's an honor to congratulate them. Madeline Shockley from Ausley Junior High recently learned that she won the grand prize for her artwork in Imagine No Violence Art Contest, and you'll see it right there, at the middle school level. Madeline's artwork was chosen as the top piece out of more than forty thousand entries to the contest sponsored by Fort Worth Safe City Commission. Students were challenged to create a piece of artwork reflecting the idea of world without violence. Her family will be going on an all-expense-paid trip to Disney World as a result of winning the contest. So congratulations to Madeline. That was very nice. Yes. Sure. We announced a partnership with AISD, I'm sorry, AISD was selected as a semifinalist with the twenty-fourteen HEB Excellence in Education Awards. AISD was among thirty districts selected from more than nine hundred applications in five categories, classroom teachers, principals, district, early childhood providers, and school boards, as well as a semifinalist. As a result, the district received a thousand dollars in HEB gift cards, and we're honored to receive this recognition. We will be distributing those gift cards as part of recognition for employees and things like that. May twenty-seventh, we celebrated Turning Point High School's twentieth anniversary as the district's alternative education program, and we were able to visit with former employees as well at Turning Point, and it was a nice celebration. Last week, students at Cooken Education Center had quite a surprise, both Clifford and Big Red Dog and Ronald McDonald visited the school. That was a big surprise for them. All students and students at other TLI campuses received summer reading book packs to continue their reading in the summer. The TLI Grant, or Texas Literacy Initiative Grant, provided this opportunity. We've announced some partnerships that will benefit our entire district recently, and the first one is a partnership with the Arlington, Texas Health Arlington Memorial Hospital, where we would be provided space, hospital space for students enrolled in clinical rotations, classes from Bowie and Lamar, to meet each week at the hospital, and also expand their clinical rotations and access into the hospital. So we're very appreciative of Kirk King and his efforts to partner with the school district. Beginning this summer, AISD employees interested in future campus leadership positions can participate in the Emerging Leaders Program. That's the other announcement. Raise Your Hand Texas is investing one point three million dollars over three years in our district for new leaders, which is an emerging leadership program. I want to thank the Raise Your Hand Texas, obviously, for focusing on Arlington AISD, but also the work of the area superintendents for their efforts in planning this, and Stephen Wirths in particular for being the contact for this program. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Brassus. Any... Any school board reports? Ms. Pena.
I had the opportunity, along with a few of the other trustees, to attend Martin High School's demonstration. I'm surprised that Dr. Kavassos didn't report that, because it was actually pretty exciting. One of the unique applications that they had, it's called GLASS, and the students each prepared their own demonstration of their abilities to learn programming, and they actually had Dr. Kavassos put on, it's a, looks like some glasses, you put on, and you talk to the computer. And one of the things we've been hearing is, and the, the kids get so excited about using the computers, that when the teacher was lecturing, they didn't want to turn off their computers. So, with this, one of the applications that had, they called GLASS, they'd say, "GLASS, turn off the monitors," and it would shut the computers off, and it would lock the keyboard. So, the only way it could be turned back on was the teacher would say, "GLASS, turn on monitors," and then they would come on. It was really awesome. And then, one of them created one of those ping pong games, and then they put one of the monitor controls in Dr. Kavassos' hands and mine, and one in my hand. So, we got to play the game that is part of that demonstration. That was, that was, our kids are so smart. I could not believe what they came up with. Also went to Miller Elementary's pre-K graduation and watched these little guys. They were awesome. Dr. Kavassos was at that event as well. They sang a song for us. And if we could get all our high school seniors to leave their graduation the way the pre-K do, which is to dance out, it would be pretty fantastic to watch them do that. Also attended the STAR luncheon.
Our graduation group's worried about that, Ms. Pena.
I just thought it was cool.
I understand the intent, but I'm a little worried about the execution, so...
It would look adorable.
Let's keep our graduation going smooth like we did in that...
I just thought if we could get our seniors to do that...
Mr. Hill's freaking out back there.
I also attended the STAR luncheon with a few of the board members, and today, Mr. Hibbs called an audit committee before this, before the very first meeting we had, so it's been a busy day. That's my report.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Pena. Anything else? Ms. Mays? Go right ahead.
Well, I guess I wasn't officially installed, but I had the opportunity to do the installation for Schuchelfurt's PTA Executive Board, and that was very, very nice, very exciting, and principal was there showing support for the PTA, so that's always good. And also today, you and I had an opportunity to go to Bowie High School, where we got to watch 10th graders, many of them who were going to be entering the IB program, put together and create a video and a cause where they would do something charitable. Things we saw was like suicide prevention, trafficking of students, poverty. So, it was very, very interesting, and we, we had to judge the top nine, which was really difficult because they were all so great, but very exciting, a lot of good ideas. If anyone's thinking of starting a 501(c)(3), I think they've got some great ideas over there at Bowie.
Wow, I didn't realize they were all sophomores. I would have guessed they were older than that. That's pretty impressive. Dr. Rush?
I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of installing the Lamar PTA officers. Ms. Mays reminded me of that. We're so blessed to have the strong volunteers and that we do in our district. And on that note, I would say for those that are helping in these last few days of school, hang in there. Good luck for our, our teachers, our kiddos, few more days. Thanks for a great year, and summer's, summer's here.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Rush. Dr. Rush, any items to follow up this evening?
Well, yes. The counseling, you know, doing a comprehensive look at that to come back at some point over the next few months, probably August, is on here. Mr. Barron's request to get that specific quantification of the energy savings from Adams Elementary, and then Ms. Mays on the assessments of the schools in East Arlington, looking at the United Way after-school on, on-campus programs. And I assume that that would just be tied into the, the status reporting back to us with the Office of Dropout Prevention, that'll just be included in there, but I wanted to mention that to make sure it got, got there.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Rush. Ms. Mays, congratulations on your first meeting. Congratulations on being installed this evening. You know, we'd been on a trend to finish before 10 for a long time, and your first meeting, we went over 11, so we're going to blame you all for that, Ms. Mays. 11 o'clock, we're, we'll adjourn at 11:04. Thank you.